We're going to call this meeting to order and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may want to explain if you're looking.
Okay, for those in the audience that are looking up here, and there's only three of us. Neil Hoteling's wife has COVID and he is not going to come. He does not have it, but his wife does and he's not going to be here. Craig's wife was just involved in an incident up here and he will not be here. So, there's three of us here. We do have a quorum. We can run the meeting. So, I just wanted to explain that before we start, if there's any questions on that. A landowner's election is scheduled for Friday, February 4th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Is there any questions on the consent agenda from the supervisor?
Yeah. I'm sorry. So, as of... So, that request that I made on December the 12th to have that changed, because I was quoted incorrectly, and yes, you sent me a piece of paper that stated that you asked for it to be changed. Well, as of last night, it was not changed. So, I don't know what the... Why am I keep bothering with this?
Well, I initialed and put that in handwriting and initialed off on it.
Right, so I have a copy of what you think you initialed, but for the records, it still states the original.
The record that we have for that is the one that's signed by the board chair that has my comments.
When I go online and I read what is there, it's not correct. I am only asking for it to state what happened. Very simple.
And that correction's been made on that paper that's signed by the board.
When I read what's on our website, it is not correct. Surely, you can understand what I'm saying.
We'll repost it from the 12th of this meeting. We'll repost it.
It's only December 12th.
And we do not have the meeting minutes from the last meeting in the board agenda book this week. We did have some technical difficulties and with some outages, and we did not get that tape out to the public and also to our contractor until Friday, so they're working on the minutes. So, the meeting minutes from January 7th will be on the next board agenda.
We don't have the minutes posted from the meeting before that either.
Any other comments by the supervisor? Any public comment?
Good morning, supervisors and district personnel. Mark Camp, resident. Actually, I think that, and there was no collaboration here, by the way. I get kind of scared because Ray mentioned a few things. One of the things that I wanted to address is a little bit about the video, a little bit about the audio, and a little bit about the minutes that we take here. And it's been a subject of discussion for a very, very long time. And one of the things is, and I noticed that Ray was speaking into the mic today, not to pick on him, but there's a tendency that people don't speak into the mic. Therefore, when we try to listen to these audios online, you can't hear it. Or, there's talking in the background by, I hate to say it, district personnel, because they're discussing something that might be on the agenda and you're trying to hear what board supervisors are saying. So, I would ask that they be a little more cognizant of, first of all, speaking into the mics, as well as when somebody is speaking, not to be addressing potential problems that you might be having with your audio. As far as the December 10th meeting, the video had a 40-minute span that was totally black. In other words, you put up the agenda or this resolution, and for 40 minutes of video, it was black. On January 10th, the rules, the golf rules, was posted such as that agenda up there. It said golf rules and that was your resolution. And that video was up for an hour and two minutes. Meanwhile, they're talking about the water system that you're looking at putting in. So, somebody is not either trained properly or is having some difficulty with the equipment to do the audiovisual parts of it, so I wanted to bring that up. The other part is specifically the minutes. The minutes were discussed last month or last week, last meeting. Last meeting, and there's a lot of mixed opinions on those minutes. Now, there was a 40-minute presentation, or 40-minute, 40 minutes, or hour meeting, and it was five pages long in minutes. It clearly doesn't represent what happened in that meeting. Now, some people say it's adequate, others say it's not adequate, others say it meets the legal requirement. Anybody looking at those minutes can't gather any information from those minutes. Yes, they can go into the video if it's available, which the last two have not been available, but they can go into the video and if it's timestamped, they can go to that particular section. You know, I noticed Mr. Coste's here. I noticed that Dave Halbig is here. I know that we've had other people come up and speak, and what they sometimes are not even recognized in the minutes. The name doesn't even show up, or the name shows up and it says, "Yeah, Mr. Coste spoke about the speaker system," and then that's the end of it. I'm not saying to go into a long elaborate description, but give a little more detail than that. Couple other things that I'd like to mention, and hopefully you'll pay attention to, is... And I think, and I might have missed it, Ray just mentioned this. The agenda for this schedule has the minutes for November 12th. Now, that might have been explained away just now. I don't know. I might have missed it. But, when I go online and get the agenda for today, it has the November 12th minutes. That doesn't do me any good. I want to see the minutes from either December or the minutes from January, of which I have none. So, there's no audio, there's no video, there's none. And then finally, I was a little bit amazed at the last meeting, the discussion that came up about reserves. There was a little bit of confusion, and I am totally surprised that either the board or the district couldn't come up with a pretty good answer on how much we have in reserves. There was confusion. Is it 3 million? Is it 6 million? Is it 9 million? You should have that off the top of your head. Now, I know Omar's no longer with us. However, when Omar was here, he would have been on that 30 seconds. He would have pulled it up on the screen and he would have said, "This is what we have. These are the transfers we've had in and out, and this is what the balance should be." But nobody seemed to have that answer between the district and, quite frankly, the board. And a couple people mentioned it. Nobody had real concrete information. We have Infomarc that's supposed to be doing some of this stuff. I don't even know if they're showing up in any of these meetings. I haven't heard them, but that doesn't mean they're not showing up, okay? And then finally, I would just like to see... I know that our new general manager, Christopher, he's attempting to enter new technology into this group, and I think technology is good and there's a learning curve there. But don't start the technology of video or audio when you don't have the appropriate training. It's not fair to those people that are running that equipment, and it's not fair to the audiences listening to it. And I really thank you very much for allowing me to express my concerns. Have a great day.
Yes, sir. And one thing, could you just state your name for the record, and that's for the...
I did say it at the beginning, but it's Mark Camp. Yeah, I said it after I greeted you.
Sorry, I missed that part. We were talking about that, about improving the minutes, and I've been having some conversations, and that's why we had the folks from Mid-Florida IT here this morning. We're trying to make some improvements, but when you start bringing in computer and the technology, what was it, sound system and recorder, we have had some hiccups, but we'll have it totally straightened out very soon.
I sure hope so, because I think there's a lot of people getting frustrated and there's not a lot of people who watch it. The other thing is, just to give you a little FYI, and I sent you a note on it, and I appreciate you respond quickly to me. The last meeting, two weeks ago, I went in through Teams. I'm familiar with Teams, so it's not like it's foreign to me. And it says, "Welcome, Mark," which it typically says whenever you log in. It'll say whoever you put in for a name, somebody will let you in the session in a few minutes. 25 minutes later, I didn't get in, so I logged out, went to another system, thinking, "Well, maybe it's technology once again." I got the same thing. I finally said, "I'm hanging up. This is it. I'm not going to bother with this."
There should have been no roadblocks set up, and the December 10th meeting minutes were on the last agenda.
December 10th?
Yes, sir. You were asking about the December meeting minutes?
Yes, I was. Okay, so December 10th. We're into our second meeting of January.
Right, well, they...
There were three meetings. This is the third meeting since then, isn't it?
No, sir.
So, that's second meeting? Okay, it's the second meeting. Oh, no, no, not since the 10th.
Chris, talk into the mic.
Those meeting minutes were in the last... We only had one meeting in December, so then they came up, the first meeting on the 7th.
Okay, and I stand corrected, and I apologize on that.
I'll get you a copy of it.
Okay. No, you don't have to get me a copy. If I can get it printed, or if I can get it online, I'd be more than happy to review it online.
Okay, we'll get it up today. Thank you.
And once again, I thank you for this extra time.
Dave Halbig, resident. Again, there's no collaboration on this, but there's a few of us that are really interested in going online and getting the information, listening to the audio to improve our recall of what went on. And this... The reading of the minutes, the approval, consent agenda for the approval of today was for the November 12th meeting. Is that correct? That's what it says on the... That's what it says on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir, that was brought back.
It was what?
It was brought back because there were some edits made in.
Okay, but you're not trying to approve the minutes for the meeting, last meeting?
No, sir. We don't have those available yet.
From my point of view, it doesn't look like Infomarc's up to the task. Maybe trying to run this district as a one-man show with all these off-site support people and entities is not going to work. We need to rethink going back to our local control of our finances, our correspondence, and at least we'll have some accountability, and maybe we can get something done on a timely basis. That's all I have to say about that, and I'm going to have one question for the commissioner when he gets up there to keep me coming back up again. I'm going to ask, we need to ask him where the list is that he promised us at the last meeting for this federal grant money.
I received that this morning. I have that in my office.
Very good.
And I'm meeting with the...
How are we going to get a hold of that individually?
I can make copies available to you, and I'm also meeting with the county administrator next week to discuss opportunities and how we can insert ourselves in that process.
We want to get a copy of the list. Is that what you're saying?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Tom Coste, evidently, this is not just comment about the consent agenda. This is general public comment. Yes or no? I got head shaking. Yes or no?
It's not.
It's not what?
It's just on a consent, but...
Because then, okay, there'll be another public, general public comment.
There is nothing to vote on, in my opinion. We've already approved, excuse me, we have already approved November 12th. We've already approved December. The only one we have not approved is January because it's not available. So, I don't know what we're voting on.
Okay.
What am I voting on?
I was going to ask that question too. If it's not here, I don't know what.
We had the November 12th meeting, and Mr. Brooks wanted to be sure that that edit was made, so we brought it back so he could see that it was made, those minutes were approved, the board chair...
I understand, but we've just been through that conversation. When I go online, if I don't know we had this conversation, and I go online and I read what it says, it has not been changed.
We'll repost it.
But there's nothing to vote on because we've already approved it.
Okay, we won't do a vote on consent agenda? We still have to have a roll call?
I'm sorry?
We still have to have a roll call, so I just have to call your name, and you can say "here" instead of "yes." Supervisor Phillips?
Here.
Supervisor Herrick? Supervisor Brooks? Supervisor Hoteling?
Yeah, I guess. What did I vote on?
And you're not voting. You're just stating that you're here at present at this meeting.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Okay. Supervisor Hoteling? Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes. So, what do we do about the consent?
Now, we can just go, we can go down to public comment.
Okay.
General public comment.
We now have public comment. And it's, just to remind everybody, it's three minutes, and I will give you extra two minutes automatically. Okay?
Okay, I'll probably forget what I was going to say before 23 minutes is up anyway. It's been happening lately. Has to do with drawing over, I guess. I would like to suggest, and we've done this in the past, that the board asked for a legal opinion from the district attorney, by the way, Tom Coste, president, a legal opinion from the district attorney about the transferring of money from an enterprise fund to a governmental fund, or vice versa. Or not that is acceptable according to standard government accounting practices. A written legal opinion on that, I suggest. Because we're doing it extensively, transferring money from the general fund to an enterprise fund when we take money from the taxpayers and dump it into the golf course or into the restaurant. These are enterprise funds. We're also taking money from the utilities fund, which is these, what used to be called Eurifa account. The word, the acronym, meaning Utilities Repair, Replacement, and Improvement Fund. Utilities being the key word. We're taking money out of that account and putting it into a different account, which is also another enterprise fund, I guess, when you put it into the golf course. But for instance, if you put it into golf carts, golf carts are not accounted for in the golf fund, which is another enterprise fund. They're actually carried by the district as a district asset. Golf carts, whether they're purchased or leased, and as far as I'm concerned, there's no difference. Purchasing versus leasing is a clever way for a business to not have to report depreciation in their business accounting. They can account for it as a general yearly expense in their financial statements. But, again, the transferring of money between enterprise funds and the government funding, those are separate accounting requirements for government entities, which is what we are. I don't know whether that should come from the Auditor General's office, that opinion, or if it should come from the Department of State, whoever would oversee this. Might even be an ethics situation. One time in the past, I did contact the Florida Utilities Commission about the transferring of money from the Eurifa account, which is not a utilities-rated... The money comes in with utilities. It comes in by the collection of the water bill. But the Utilities Department is not here to support the golf course. And that's what, we're taking, actually, for the past 10 years, we've been taking over half a million dollars a year out of the proceeds of our water bill and putting it into a newly, that we newly renamed, under Ms. Kennedy, we renamed the Eurifa account, the Capital Improvement Fund. And we use that as a pot of money that we can spend on whatever we want. We recently spent well over a million dollars, maybe closer to 2 million dollars, on the golf clubhouse, out of the water proceeds. I called the Utilities Department, and I said, "Don't you folks, when you look at the rates that we're charging here for water, don't you folks monitor whether or not it's legitimate that our utilities actually require that amount of money in our water bill collections to support our Utilities Department?" He said, "Well, if you were a private, if your Utilities Department was a private entity, yes, we do. We protect the citizens of the state of Florida with their utility rates on that basis. And privately-owned utilities have to come to us to adjust their rates. But, that's a government-owned Utility Department. You've got, you as a citizen, you've already got complete control over that by virtue of the people you elect to that board. You've got more control than we do." This is what they told me at this Florida Utilities Commission. So, that's on you guys. That's why I'm asking for a legal opinion from our district attorney on how we handle our money that we collect. It's actually, it's almost $19 a month that we collect on the water bill, whether the water meter is turned on or not. These people from Canada are paying almost $20 a month when they're not even here.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? And we are going to discuss the... Just a minute, Mark. We're going to discuss the golf course, and there will be public comment on that too, okay? Just to let everybody know.
Is it permissible to get another minute or two? Because I didn't, is it permissible to get another minute or two? Okay.
Yes.
One of my senior moments again, but Tom Coste actually prompted me, Mark Camp, resident. When I was talking about the question on the reserve fund, and I understand transfers in and out, things of that nature, and I think that's kind of what maybe Tom was alluding to too, on the Capital Improvement Fund that was created under, I believe it was Tanya. But one of the things is that I noticed under the Capital Improvement Fund is we have allocated 1.25 million to the water meter system, 1.35 million to the Deer Run irrigation system, and the Turbom Green Loops 350,000, which has been transferred to that particular fund. What, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I looked back and I looked at the quotes that we're getting for the irrigation system on Deer Run at somewhere in the area of 2.35 or 2.2.
Right around 2.2.
So, it sounds like we got a little bit of a shortfall and have to come up with another, maybe 900,000 or a million dollars. Are you guys going to cover that next? Oh, next. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other public comment? Okay, Scott, your turn. Welcome, by the way.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. Scott Keroy, Highlands County Commissioner. At your last meeting, you asked me at a couple items. One of them was to arrange a meeting between your general manager. Is this working? Okay.
Now.
To arrange a meeting between your general manager and our county administrator. And I got email confirmation back yesterday that that meeting is going to happen a week from today. Chris will be meeting with Randy Bossberg, our county administrator. You also had asked me about the county's assistance in some, in grants and things like that, and the administrator reported back to me on the state revolving fund that we actually reached out to you folks and brought this concept to you. We offered, we offered for them to apply jointly with us, and they decided to apply on their own, which is great. That's no issue. Certainly, you guys can navigate that. There's also reporting to me that there is, and I do not know what the acronym stands for, FRDAP grant. It's the recreation grant, I believe, that Chris referenced in his email to me. It's reported back to me that actually, we applied on your behalf. Liz worked with Ariel, is what I'm being reported. She reviewed the application, and our county administrator signed the application for that grant. So, on water management district issues, they are issues that you folks would be, that you have to take care of on your own. The county cannot assist you in the water management district grant process. And also, one of your citizens asked about the ARPA funding plan that the county adopted. And my understanding is that was sent to Chris this morning. I asked for it last week. When he reported back to me on the meeting that had been set up with Chris, I replied back to him about whether that information was sent. Our Legislative Grants Coordinator, Liz, she's on vacation, started yesterday, so I know that that grant, or the ARPA spending plan, was sent to Chris this morning for him to distribute to any of y'all. I think that was it as far as what we talked about last time. Give you a quick update. I know we've been talking about recycling a little bit. We finally did secure the location for the Sebring. That will be at Max Long Field in Sebring. And Avon Park has still been, I don't know if dragging their feet is the correct word, but we just not have had a lot of response out of them. We're taking a little bit different approach with the city of Avon Park to try to secure a piece of city property for the recycling collection facility. We do have a backup plan for that if we cannot get the city to come on board with that. That, and actually, would be closer to you folks here at Sun and Lakes. The restaurant that's kind of a little bit north here on 27, Senor Jalapenos, there's a lake right there. Lake, I think it might be Lake Glenada or something is it called? There's a county public boat ramp there, and we have, the county owns some property right there. So, that is a potential location for the recycling drop-off if we cannot work something with the city of Avon Park on a piece of property that they own, okay? I see on your agenda that your action agenda item C, you're looking at a resolution for Highlands County to pave Schumacher Road. So, if you'd like for me to stick around for that while you discuss that, I'd be glad to do so.
You're welcome.
Okay, and if you folks have any other questions for me, I would be glad to answer.
Is there any questions from the supervisor or comments?
A lot of this was news, new to me. I didn't know we were doing some of this stuff.
Yeah, but I think it's a good thing that we've, we're going to connect our county administrator, Randy Bossberg, with your general manager, Chris Schumacher, and they're going to work on scheduled regular meetings so we can make sure we keep you people in tune to everything that we can possibly help you with out here at the district, and certainly what's going on within the county. And like I said, you're always welcome to reach out to me. But I look forward, and I think those will be very productive meetings between the two of them.
Yeah, I agree, and I can understand why we were not in on a lot of stuff because we didn't have anybody there.
Right, yeah.
Tell you the truth, I never... It's too bad I didn't think of that earlier because we should have had somebody from Sun and Lake on those committees and been doing that, and I, you know, I don't know who to blame.
Well, I can take some responsibility. I mean, I guess we all could take some blame on that and some short-sightedness, but I think what's important moving forward...
Yeah, because we can't get anything done if we don't have anybody from Sun and Lake in this.
We bridge that gap. If there's any communication problems between the district and our county administration, then I certainly want to make sure that we move forward in a very positive manner in that, so, and see what we can accomplish together.
But I also want to comment, and it's not against you because you've only been here a year, but we have a county representative through the commissioner, and us not being at those meetings is vital. We should have been there, but our county commissioner should be looking out for us, so...
See, on the ARPA spending plan, of course, we had to go, we were on our time crunch deadline, and like I'd said last meeting, that these projects are earmarked projects and tentative funding for those projects. Each one of those projects will come back in front of the commission for final approval. Each one of those projects will come back in front of the commission for final approval. Some of those projects will not require the funding that has been earmarked for them, so it could free up money for other eligible projects. And I know somebody mentioned something about the Spring Lake broadband expansion or what have you, and that was one of the eligible expenses that could be used with ARPA funding. And actually, the Spring Lake District Office, they reached out to us when they studied the plan to see what eligible projects were available under that funding, and they came to county administration to advocate for their need for that out in their community. So certainly, we will work forward on bridging these communication gaps that we have, and hopefully, we can all work together.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you do me a favor? Can you just review what you, I'm asthmatic, the grant information that you were talking about? Because I don't even know, I didn't realize you guys were even involved.
Yeah. Well, there's a State Revolving Fund grant that you folks have participated in, and I'm sure will continue to participate in moving forward. And Chris in his email to me had mentioned something about a recreation grant and what is reported back to me from the county administrator. And you folks may know what the acronym is, FRDAP grant. And I believe it had some recreation facilities that you had out here. Liz Barber, who was our Legislative Affairs Consultant and our Grant Coordinator, has been reported to me that she worked with Ariel. They both reviewed the application to make sure that it was complete and ready to go. And our county administrator actually had to sign the application and submitted that for your district. And I believe maybe, I'm not sure where the status of that grant is right now, but we were involved with your staff on that particular grant.
That particular grant that he's referring to is the FRDAP grant, the one that we're waiting to hear back on?
I'm sorry.
The FRDAP grant with regards to the playground?
Yeah.
That's what he's referring to.
He had to approve it? The county had to approve it?
The county administrator had to sign the actual application. How was it? He just had to sign it. I had to take, I had to take the application there?
How long ago did we apply for that? I thought, isn't that like five, six months ago? Now we're just getting it approved?
No, it's not approved. That's the one that we continue.
Or getting the county to back us or whatever the hell it is?
No, they signed it before I could even submit it, which was, I don't even remember, several months ago. He's just reporting that that's something that the county and Sun and Lake worked together on. That's, that grant was the one for the playground that we're waiting to hear back. I told you guys that it'll likely be July before we hear back, and we know whether or not we got those funds for the playground.
Okay.
And Scott, I'll mention too, I did attend the local mitigation work group.
Okay.
Meeting this week. They meet quarterly, and they also control and delegate funding from FEMA and from mitigation projects. So we have a seat at that table now.
Yeah, and our county administrator can certainly share with Chris what other opportunities and committees would be available for either maybe one of your supervisors or staff to sit on and certainly get you involved in that process. Yes.
It sounds to me like we got to work on our communication. It's tough to hear things for the first time here.
We've reported the FRDAP grant in this meeting several times.
You told me that you did the FRDAP, yeah.
Yeah, the FRDAP has been referenced several times.
There seems to be a lot of things going on that we don't know about.
We're contingent on that FRDAP money, is contingent on what we do with the playground. So that has been reported on multiple occasions in this meeting with regards to the playground.
I understand. I'm just saying, I get the feeling that our communication is not at the level it should be.
And listen, I understand. What I want to try to do moving forward is let's make sure that we are communicating to the best ability that we can between the county and the district. And that's what we're doing moving forward. We have aligned our county administrator with your general manager, and I told my county administrator that I want to, for them to schedule regular meetings, however they decide those meetings, whether they're monthly meetings, bi-monthly, quarterly, for them to schedule regular meetings so can certainly keep them up to date on the administrative end of the county and anything that we can do to assist the district. We'll be glad to assist the district on anything that we're able to assist the district on. And let's move forward in that.
Well, we talked the last meeting, I thought we said monthly meetings, right?
Sure, what, if that's what.
I believe that's what we said at the last meeting, so I assume that's what's going to be done.
If your Board of Supervisors directs your general manager.
I am on the Board of Supervisors, and we said at the last meeting, it will be monthly.
Okay. Then I would suggest that Chris request monthly meetings with our county administrator. If he would like to meet monthly, that is no problem at all. He will meet at whatever schedule Chris and the Board of Supervisors directs him to meet. That's what I've instructed him to do.
And we still owe you an answer on whether we want to pursue the recycle bins, is that correct?
Yes.
Or is that a dead issue?
No, no, we are, our first phase is three locations with the hopes to put it in each municipality, Avon Park, Sebring, and Lake Placid. Sebring and Lake Placid are secured. We're working on Avon Park. The second phase is two additional locations, a fourth and fifth location. And those locations, in our staff conversations, has been one in Sun and Lakes here in Sebring and Spring Lake. So you folks are slated, if we can work together for a location that we can find, that you would provide the piece of property, we would provide all of the work to develop it, to fence it in, and to man that location, yes, then you folks are on the list to eventually have a recycling location here in your community if you desire to do so.
And how much time would you think there is before we have to give you our answer?
We haven't even been asked yet, Ray. They're going to do the three, Avon Park, Sebring, and Lake Placid, and then they're going to come back to us to see if we can find a place and come in.
Well, perhaps we should try and find it and decide if we want it before they ask us.
Yes, my suggestion would be that if you, if you have a desire to have one here, the next step that I would suggest for the supervisors and the staff is to find the physical piece of property that belongs to the district that you would want to have the recycling facility located at. And then I will have staff get with your staff and come out and review the location to make sure that it meets the criteria. And then if it is, then we're ready to go when, when this fourth and fifth recycling facility is ready to get up and running. Absolutely. Yep. Okay. So I'll stay here and I'll answer any questions, and then I'll hang around for the resolution on the Schumacher Road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on Commissioner Kerak's comments?
Tom Coste again, resident. I would like to understand, clear misunderstanding I might have. Mr. Kerak, Highlands County, if I'm not mistaken, is a non-charter county, is that correct? That meaning that because Highlands County does not have a charter, the county is responsible for all the citizens of the county, including those citizens of Sun and Lake in terms of getting state required services such as garbage pickup, roads, and et cetera. Highlands County created Sun and Lake as a special district during a very short period when the counties had the ability to create an independent special district such as Sun and Lake. We're the only one left in the state that was created under those former statutes. It was, I think at the time, it was Florida Statute 125, which was where Sun and Lake was created. So, things like garbage pickup, road improvements, drainage sewers, all of that, that's the responsibility of the county for the citizens of Sun and Lake. It seems like you're putting it on the citizens and the Board of Sun and Lake to lead the charge for whatever we need, when it's the county's responsibility to see that we got those services. Am I incorrect with that?
It is my understanding that the county has an interlocal agreement with the district on whose responsibility road maintenance and which roads are maintained by the county and which roads are maintained by the district. The county maintains Sun and Lake Boulevard. All other roads out here are maintained by the district. We've had these conversations before. If there's a desire from the Board of Supervisors to direct staff to look at the county taking over the maintenance of the roads out here in Sun and Lakes, we certainly can look into that and come back with details on that.
So is what you're saying that if the, if the Board of the, this Sun and Lake Special Improvement District does not request specifically to the county that these roads be, being taken care of, the county is then relieved of the responsibility that's written in the state constitution that the counties see that we get these services?
That would be correct. That would be my understanding because when this community was developed, and this is what has been, what I have been told, okay? The roads out here do not meet county specs, do not meet county standards. If you want the county to take over the maintenance of those roads, then those issues would have to be addressed, and we would have to come up with a plan on the county maintaining your roads. We talked about this before, that if the county was to adopt and take over the roads out here, then those roads would be maintained on the same schedule that all county roads are maintained, when it comes to paving, when it becomes to mowing, and the other maintenance on those county roads. The reason that been explained to me that you have an improvement district out here is because of the citizens' desire and enhanced level of service. Okay? And that's why this district was formed, because you did not want just what the county provided, you wanted a more upscale community with an enhanced level of service. If this Board of Supervisor decides to direct me as a commissioner and your staff to pursue to take over the roads in this district, then I will certainly do so and have staff come here to explain what process and what would that be involved.
I think that would be a good, good thing for the Board to consider.
We've already done that and voted on it.
Sorry?
We have already had this discussion and we voted on it, and we voted to stay independent. We've already turned this, we want it.
Don't we normally hire the, hire, where do we get our asphalt for our roads? We get it, I think we buy it from whatever the local road contractors are, KDL or whoever it is that does it, but they get it from the county. We get it from the county asphalt point. You know, actually, actually, I think we've actually even paid the county to come in and do some road improvements out there, but out on the back entrance. I think those were county crews that came in and redid the paving and the road striping out there. So, I mean, to me, it's, it's like, we're just, it's like a shell game going back and forth between the county and the district, and here we are. And by the way, the plat, the county approved the plat of Sun and Lake for the developers way back in the beginning. And I don't, I really, I've heard that comment about our roads don't measure up to county spec, but I've also read some, some, thank you.
Mr. Coste, I appreciate your comments, but sorry, time is up.
And like I said, that their direction of the supervisors, if you would like me to have the county engineer come and make a presentation at any time.
For what?
About the roads, I would be glad to do so.
No, we don't right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see if the Board would entertain having Mr. Hotteling participate in the meeting and voting at this meeting by remote.
What?
I don't think we can. We voted that he.
What was that? I'm sorry?
He requested that Mr. Hotteling must be.
No way.
Listening and.
No, you're not here, you don't vote.
And we've already done that, so, but we can address that again, but we've already voted that he couldn't. And I'm glad you're listening, Neil. The action agenda, the first thing on the action agenda is the Deer Run Golf Course Irrigation Project. So, get me in.
Need a motion.
Oh, need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
You go next.
I'm starting to get a brain freeze already.
Good morning, everybody. Jimmy Murphy, Director of Agronomy, Sun and Lake. So, I know that there's been quite a bit of work done in this. We've tried to keep the pricing as stable as we can. I know that we only have three supervisors here this morning. If you guys elect to push it to the next meeting, of course, I'm fine with whatever you guys decide. The only thing is, is that Carl has a couple of more opportunities, and that's the only thing that's pushing us right now, who was the $105,000 less than what Land Deer was. I think that we need to get it done as soon as we can in order to award it to somebody because we only have two contractors at this point. Everybody tries to start their construction around May and June, so I think that has to be taken into consideration as well as the pipe pricing.
When you think, if we approve this, excuse me, if we approve this, when would you estimate we would start?
June 6 is our tentative start.
June 6?
Yeah.
Done by?
Should be.
Approximately.
It, I mean, it all depends on weather naturally, but I mean, most of, and the report that Carl sent with this, he's looking at 60 to 70 days. It all depends on what he can do. 60 to 70 working days. So I would say.
Translate that into.
Seven weeks. I would, seven to eight weeks, I would say he should do.
So two months?
Yes, sir.
And you can work around that with any events that you might have, what have you?
Yeah, I think with this project, when, when it starts to go in, it's, we're not tearing up the whole entire golf course and have to repair it. A lot of the stuff, the main line is where you're going to see a lot of it. The rest of it's going to be, you know, pulled in. So the, you know, the course itself, the fairways and all that are not going to be tore up. So as soon as, and they're not going to have the entire course all at, you know, in one motion at one time. So I don't see why we can't work around a lot of schedules.
And which of the two guys did you recommend?
We had Land Deer.
Yeah, but which ones, which of the two do you think you want to go with?
Again, if it was my money, I would go with the $105,000.
It is your money.
Then I would definitely go, Carl, I called all of his references. I called his latest job, they highly recommending. I have no problem going with GT irrigation.
So GT irrigation, because you know, your bid number only changed by about 115 bucks from the last meeting.
Yes, sir. They're trying to hold pricing as quick as they can for you. I mean, they're talking, it changes about every two to three days. And it's all based on.
Let me ask you about Turtle. I think at the last meeting, you gave, you gave me the number, I don't remember if you said it to everybody else, that it would be approximately a half a million, 500 to 550,000 to do the green loops now on Turtle based on what you know today.
Yes, sir. And I'll have that, Tony's got it almost completed. He's got all the satellites, GPS, he's got all the pipe. It's not going, it won't be as big a deal if they're on property. If they got to remobilize, then it's going to be a different situation, but you will have that number. I'm trying to get that number as quick as I can.
So it's not 500 to 550, or it is?
It's, I don't have an actual bid on it yet, no, sir, but I will.
But for planning purposes, obviously, we don't have that planned anywhere. So when would you like to, when would you recommend that you'd like to see this done in the next five years?
I would say if we could do it in 2023, then I would say we get it done then.
So next, next year, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The only reason why is because we can't water efficiently over there with our surrounds, our surrounds get really dry, and it's extra water on the greens. So the greens stay wet because we're trying to water the slopes.
So that would be something we have to consider to put into the budget since it's not there at this point?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And then, like I said, as far as what, I mean, I've talked to SWIFTMUD, and as far as that goes, they're, they're good with the plan, current plan. And I tried to present the agreements that we had with SWIFTMUD at that time of the study and everything. And so, I mean, we, our permit is good for 20 years. Okay? So the, the problem with Deer Run irrigation right now is that we cannot isolate anything on Deer Run without having to shut the pump system down every time.
Right. So if we do the, SWIFTMUD is the one that's the water conscious, right? They're the ones that are.
Yes, sir.
How much water we can use, et cetera, et cetera.
And they're.
If we only do deer and we don't do turtle, are they going to be okay with that?
Currently, yes. I, just because the way the market is right now, but they, you know, the agreement was with Paulson Engineering and everybody, the whole studies was that Sun and Lake would do this in order to try to conserve the water as much as you can. They're the only government really agency that can find you monthly.
That was the agreement, that was the agreement we made when it was 1.7, but for the two of them, now it's 2.7 for the two of them.
Correct.
Things change.
I know.
So when I read through all that, it did state that we would do it when it was economically feasible for the district to do that. So I think if you were to decide to do the Deer Run, I believe that would show good faith that they would, it would buy you time before you would decide to do Turtle. That's the way I would look at it, in my opinion. I think as far as decision purposes, that makes me nervous with this, if we delay this any longer, like Jimmy was stating, we have two contractors, one's $100,000 less than the other one. And if. And if we hold, if, if, if we hold this off any longer, we could start to lose those contractors, because they wanna have a job scheduled for the summer. So, if we wait another two weeks, another three weeks, they could say, sorry, we took this other job, we're no longer in the running. That's what makes me nervous, and I think Jimmy as well.
You know, you don't, you don't really want me to say what I'm thinking, do you? Well, okay. Thank you. I can't vote on this project, I can tell you that.
Beverly, you got any comment?
No.
Okay, Chris, I know you have somebody here that wanted to address some of the stuff.
Sure, Amanda Valentine, our finance officer. And she put together four pages of data with the background information on all her account.
That's this?
Yes, sir. And she, she took an original projection that was done at budget time, she revised it to update it, and then the front sheet on there is, is all the district's assets, certificates of deposit, local government investment pool, and the status of the reserve account. And if we make the expenditures for the meters and the irrigation and the turtle loop, but I'll let Amanda take a couple of minutes just to give you a brief overview of it, where we are with these reserve accounts, and if we spend the money on the irrigation and the meter project, where we'll end up.
Well, welcome, Amanda. I know you haven't ever, I've never seen you here yet, so I'm sure you wanna come every meeting now. Well, welcome, anyway. And this is Amanda, and she's our finance officer for the public.
Hi, everyone. Chris wanted me to talk to you a little bit about the reserves that we have. I know, I guess that was asked last time. So, on the first page, this shows you the cash that we have as of November. We had around $11 million, 11.9. Of that, we have 3.4 million set aside in our capital improvement fund. That's restricted for capital projects on the utility fund. The 3.4 million is, we have it diversified for a few different accounts. We have a checking account with TD, there is a certificate of deposit. That certificate of deposit, $1.1 million, is gonna mature next month. That is gonna be the first money that I say we would use if we were gonna do this, um, this project. We would move that into a, a checking account and use that. We also have some funding as the capital improvement plan that are in local government investment pools that are approved for local governments, Florida Prime and Florida Fit with Water Walker. We have 1.7 million in Water Walker. That's probably where we're gonna go to next. We're gonna cash out the CD first, we're gonna cash out Water Walker next to pay for these projects. I did a little summary for you at the bottom, just to kinda show you. We budgeted 2.9 million in capital projects this year. With the current quotes we have, if we did all the projects, including Turtle Run and the water meters, you're at 4.5 million. So, you've spent all of your capital improvement funds. And in order to pay for the rest of that, we would then move into our reserves, which are gonna be our investment accounts in the general fund, operating account money for the utility fund.
So, let's talk in layman's terms, because I understand Mr. Coste challenging whether we have the ability to do what we're doing, but we are doing what we're doing at this point in time.
Right, the, um, the golf fund is a governmental fund, it is not an enterprise fund. The utility fund is an enterprise.
Well, I assume that you got, he'll check that out.
Yes.
We'll, we'll-
Yeah.
Take care of that when we, when it's time to take care of that.
But these projects will, um, you know, they'll, the only way we can pay them, of course, we would use the capital improvement fund for these large projects. Your other capital projects you've approved, equipment, that sort of thing, we'll use our, our reserves that are in our, our cash accounts with TD to pay for those. But, um, we currently don't have anything budgeted to put more money in this capital improvement plan. So, if we spend it all this year, we're gonna have to work in future budgets to figure out how to replenish it.
I have a question for you, David. I like Mr. Coste's, uh, idea. Uh, do you have an opinion on, on that?
I don't want to second, but I'm happy to do some research and, and prepare one, absolutely.
But will you do what Mr. Coste asked? I think that's something we should know.
Absolutely, yeah, I took notes when he was talking, I was gonna bring it up during my report, but if the board wants to give me that direction now, I'm happy to start that process.
Well, I think we-
Well, he asked for it.
He, I mean, and, and we need to know whether we're doing stuff like we're supposed to.
Happy to, I'll be happy to research it and prepare an opinion.
Is there any other comment from the board?
Yeah, I don't understand this at all, so tell me something.
Which page, which page are you looking at?
On, on the adopted page, it says that we're gonna end the year at 6,564,000.
The adopted, the adopted page, um, it was the 8 million.
I'm sorry?
Where it says 8 million at the bottom, that was what was adopted.
I'm, I'm looking at this-
This was the, this was the form you discussed that you wanted to see revised, correct?
So, I'm, it says 6,564,942 dollars is where we're gonna end this year, based on the capital that we thought we were gonna spend, correct?
Okay, correct, yes.
Then, and you change it, and you put in the additional capital, you come up with a number of 5,111,000.
Correct.
So, what you're saying is, if we do everything that's on that sheet, which would be the increased anticipation of the meters, the irrigation, and the green loops, we're gonna spend a million four more than we thought we would.
Correct. And there's a little bit of difference from the adopted and the revised also, because I included prior year actual numbers. Instead of prior year estimates, they came in, we, we had a little bit more money, you know, actually, than what we estimated when we adopted it.
And let me ask you this, where is the recreation money in this, in this now?
It is not considered, well, it's gonna be part of the general fund capital that you'll see the current year budget, that 545, the rec, to do the playground, is that what you're talking about? It's gonna be part of that 545 that we budgeted, and we would use general fund cash.
That 545's got 300 and some odd thousand, whatever the number is for you.
Yes, it does.
And you've also included the green loops.
Yes.
So, theoretically, if I said, the heck with the recreation for this fiscal budget, the heck with the green loops, I would save us how much?
Be 550 and 350? Yeah, so 900,000?
I'm sorry?
1000.
900,000?
900,000.
900,000, so we'd be 900,000 better?
Yes. Yes.
That's my vote. No offense to the recreation, I think we would push it, I mean, I, I have no problem doing the recreation in the next fiscal budget, which could be starting in October. Which we're not gonna probably, that's probably where we're gonna end up anyway, because I believe Ariel just said that we're not gonna hear back on potential funding until this summer. So, we're looking at next year anyway. The green loops, I, I can't say what I'm thinking, I, I would just postpone the green loops indefinitely. I'd take it out, screw them. Until we figure out a way to pay for it.
Beverly, any, any comment?
I disagree. I, we, we need to table the green loops.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, and maybe we don't do them till 2020, 2023. But I think the Deer Run project has got to go forward.
I'm sorry, you think what?
The Deer Run irrigation project needs to go forward.
Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, public comment?
Mark Camp, resident, just, uh, I wanna make sure I understood this correctly. So, you're thinking of taking out-
That was just me.
You're thinking of taking out the $550,000, the green loops on deer, on Turtle, and the recreational upgrades for 900?
$350,000 is included in that for the playground upgrade.
Okay, so, a little less than a million, 950,000?
Roughly 900,000.
950,000, and we had a deficit of a million on doing the irrigation system on deer? Okay, that's all I wanted, just wanted to make sure, so you're just taking the money that was budgeted really next year for you, for your recreation, and taking the green loops out of it to, to kinda recruit that million dollars?
Well, I mean, we've got a serious situation, because next year, we're gonna run into a budget problem too.
But, but that's next year.
I'm pushing, am I pushing the can down the road to get to this right now? Yeah, yeah, I'm pushing the can.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, and Mr. Camp, for clarification, when they, when they're using that figure 545,000 dollars for the recreation, 350,000 is our budget, the 200,000 is grant money. So, we can't really spend that grant money or, you know, count that as savings, because if we don't do that project, that 200,000 goes away.
Yeah, that's, I, I think that was the same way with the pickleball and shuffleboard and all of that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, uh, what do we do? We got three supervisors here.
I can't vote for unless we make those other changes, I can tell you now. My, my vote will be a no.
Well, the current, the current motion, based on the agenda item, is to approve the purchase of the pipe provided by Westco Turf in the amount of 1.1 million in labor and general condition cost by GT irrigation, and the amount of 1.1 million for the Deer Run Golf Course for a total price of 2.2, and today designated source of funds. So, that's the motion that was made and seconded. So, if you wanna make any changes to it, we need to have a, a motion and a second to change it.
Unless there's a budget change, I'm just off the record, or it's not my turn, I'm voting no. And I haven't heard a word from you, what, what do you think?
I'm, um, that's why I ask, I, I am not willing, with three of us here to with, with three of us here, and now four, to, uh-
I don't think this is such a good idea. This is not a good idea.
You know, I, I, I just, I would vote no, whatever comes up, until we have more explanation and, uh-
Well, we have, let's say-
What explanation do you want?
Whether we're doing stuff right, and whether we can afford, afford this. Uh, we, we have to do the meters, the water meters, that's a must, that's not even and that's 1.8 million?
Yes, sir, and, and the, um, thought we could get the golf course issue settled with the amount of money we might have left, and the meter syst and our staff will be coming back at the next meeting with five options to pursue, um, on the meter project, and we're looking at it.
I, I really believe we should do the irrigation system.
I do too.
But it's, the, the way we're, the way we're doing it right now, I, I'm not comfortable with. And along with what we have to spend for the meters. So, uh, you know, I, I-
I wanna, I wanna do the irrigation system, but I think we have to face facts, we can't spend all this money.
Yeah.
I think we have to change some of the, some of the money, the way we're gonna spend it, and if we can't-
But I'm prepared not to vote no, whatever we come up with, and I kinda agree with some of Ray's opinions, but right now, I would, if you wanna bring it up and do it, I, my vote is no.
Well, it's already been brought up.
Yeah, it's already been voted, so here's the, so here's the option, so it's been motioned and seconded, so someone can move to table it, until it can be, you know, we can try and come up with some sort of fix or workaround or modification. Or we, yeah, or the option is to vote on the, vote on it as it's presented.
Okay, and Mr. Hoteling is here, and maybe he wants to speak.
At 9:05, he joined the meeting.
Yep. Go ahead, Neil.
I had attended earlier as well, I'm double masked, I am not, I'm negative, but my, I've been exposed, so that's why I was trying to stay away.
If you're trying to make me feel better, you're not.
I understand, I, I'll, I'll stay social distance, uh, and I'm double masked. And again, I'm negative. But the, uh, one of the points I brought up at the last meeting that, uh, I wasn't followed up on, because we weren't approving this at the last meeting, we tabled it, um, but that we had budgeted a million three for the irrigation project, and we could go to the golf memberships for an assessment uh, to pay for the difference over the next 10 years, which would be a couple hundred dollars a year per member. Um, so that, that would be the only way that I'd be willing to go forward with doing this. I, I don't think we can justify $2 million of our expense for the irrigation.
For the sake of the community, I know nobody wants to hear this, we have to do the, the irrigation. We do, we need the golf course to maintain itself, to attract people for various reasons, to keep the, the, the housing costs or the property values where they are, et cetera, et cetera. We have gotten ourselves into, into a hole, I don't disagree with that. But I think we have to do the golf course, I think trying to charge the membership at this late, at, at this point in time is, is just not right. I think maybe down the road, we can look at doing something, that's, that's a possibility. But just to do it now, because we got ourselves into a corner, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily the right answer. I think we make the adjustments necessary to get us through this year at a $6 million level, which is what we said we wanted to be at when we did the budget originally, and if we can do that and get the golf course done, I don't see why there would be a problem in, in adopting it. Now, we'll have a problem next year, I don't disagree, but at least we have some time to figure out what the heck to do. Whether it's assessments, or what it is, to get ourselves in a better shape, but, you know, trying to do it now, when we have to make a decision on the golf course, I don't believe is the right way to go.
Okay, any, any other comment? So, I guess we're gonna vote on the okay, so, go ahead.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
This is a vote to say they requested motion, that's, that was motioned and seconded, is to approve the purchase of pipe provided by Westco Turf in the amount of 1.1 million and labor and general condition cost by GT irrigation, the amount of 1.1 million for the Deer Run Golf Course Irrigation Project for a total price of 2.2 million and designate the source of funds. That is the current motion that's been motioned and seconded. It's an approval, it's been those funds. And a vote's been-
So, so how, how would I be able to change that?
You need to make a motion to change it.
It should not be that hard. I wanna stay at $6 million, so how do I wanna word that, to get it into the motion?
I mean, it could be, you can move to table it and see if you get a second, and then we can vote to table whether or not it'll get tabled to try and rework the numbers.
I assume that, wasn't that one of our intentions, to rework the numbers, because we didn't know what they were?
I think that's why the, the last, the motion, the last meeting was tabled so that you could get the information that Amanda provided.
Right, so we should be talking about the numbers before we have to vote on this, should we not?
The motion's been made and seconded, so if we, we need to either vote on it or make a motion to admit, to change it, or motion to table it.
He could also make a second motion.
I'm sorry?
He could also make a second motion.
Correct. This motion's on the table, yeah, this motion's on the table.
And voted, we got one vote.
Correct, a vote's been called, and a vote's, and Beverly's voted in favor.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Supervisor Hoteling?
No.
Supervisor Brooks?
This is so stupid.
Gotta vote.
I don't have to do anything. This is so wrong.
It's just a motion, you can make another motion, but this motion's on the table and being voted on.
Yeah.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
Okay, so that motion fails two to-
I make a motion, we now go and do this the right way. I mean, let's talk about the numbers and get the numbers right, and then see what we can do. I mean, that's what we're supposed to have done anyway. If we can't get the numbers to where we all agree to them, then fine, it stays the way it is. But if we get the numbers to where we think we can live with them and do it, then we do it. That's my motion, you can work it any way you want. That's my motion. You can work it any way you want.
Would you like me to revise this tabling Turtle Run and the clubhouse so you can see where it is?
With this, can anybody? I assume everybody else can work with it.
Okay.
So all what you're suggesting is that we
Originally, we wanted to end the year, this fiscal year, at six million dollars.
Correct.
Right now, if we do everything on the on the table, we end at five point one. If we make adjustments not in this uh, between us to where it comes out to six million dollars and we're able to do the golf course, then I, you know, I think we're good. And 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 it's easy to do. You take out the 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 loops and you take out the recreation and you're there. This is not that hard. That's nine hundred thousand. Do we still have a problem for next year? Yes. But we got six months or five months or whatever it is to figure it out, not two hours. That's it. That's my motion.
All right. So this mo this agenda item has been voted on and been voted down. Based on Mr. Brooks' comments, it sounds like they're asking district staff to rework it and come back with a proposal where some of this can still be done and be left at a six million dollar balance at the end of the year. So in my opinion, based on what's on the agenda, we just move forward. That instruction has been given to district staff and we'll put that on the agenda for the next board meeting.
But prices will change by the next board meeting.
Yes, they very well may.
So we're just spinning wheels.
Well, this has been voted down.
Okay.
And that's I mean, it's that's where we're at. So the question is, I mean, the when the board sets the agenda for the next meeting, hopefully, we can come up with the something that is vote that can get voted on and achieve that goal. But we'll see.
So there's a motion by Mr. Brooks, right?
No, 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 no. I mean, he's I think I say, I think with this, like I say, we this agenda item has been voted on and is done. So we have, based on the conversation that's occurred, in my opinion, we've got the district staff has instruction on what at least Mr. Brooks and 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 that can be resolved in the preparation of the agenda for the next board meeting. And the district staff will go in and try and rework some numbers and come up with a proposal because anything that's going to to get to to accomplish what Mr. Brooks is talking about is going to require probably some budget amendments.
Going to require what?
Budget amendments.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
So those, like I say, we can put those into the board meeting, I mean, the board, the uh, agenda for the next board meeting. But but this this meeting, I say, we voted on, it's voted down, it's over. Next item.
We're done. We're done.
Let me, for argument's sake, I will offer my suggestion as a motion, and if it gets a second, we can vote on it. If not, it dies. But let's I I'll move that we approve the irrigation project at one point three million dollars from the board with the balance to be assessed over ten years to the members.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Die's for lack of a second.
I'll step down and second it.
All right. So there's been a so there's been a Mr. Gilpin has stepped down and seconded. So there's we can have a discussion on that. If you want to discuss it or just vote. But we'll need public comment.
I don't want to discuss it.
I well, I I know what there's so it'll probably be two to two again, which will fail, but I think we ought to have public comment.
Yeah, and just to be clear, but if I'm understanding to make sure I'm understanding, Mr. Hoteling's motion is that he's suggesting that we approve the pipe purchase at one point one three million with the uh, GT irrigation of one point one to be assessed against the membership over a course of time.
Ten years.
Ten years.
Yeah, I actually was not saying that. I was saying that we do the project and the board would pay one point three million of the project. And and the balance would be assessed to the member over ten years.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Yep. Okay, now let's have public comment.
That's awesome. Mark Camp, resident. I'm not definitely. I'm not opposed to the idea that Neil just said. What I am a little bit opposed to is the ten years, we have no idea what that assessment's going to be. We know that we have to make up a deficit of roughly a million dollars, I think, that will be assessed to the the golfers. But more importantly, you have an item here that the public doesn't even know about. You haven't had, this is not an agenda item. I think it would be the prudent thing to put this as an agenda item for the next meeting because you know what? You'll have to get another haul because you will have this place filled. And you need the details of what that assessment is going to be. I don't think you can say a blanket assessment. But anyway, those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brook or Mr. Camp.
Tom Costi, resident. Just remind everybody, the next meeting is seven days from now. Very short. We have a meeting. I believe we have a meeting on February fourth, do we not?
Yes, but that's that's two weeks. Today's the twenty first.
Oh. Where the hell was I? I missed a week. Thank you.
I wish I could too.
Somebody left there. Dave Halbig. You know, this membership's not as stupid as you might think it is. You know, it's a pretty easy arithmetic problem to figure out whether or not you're better off playing for by the day or being a member. It's not going to you like like Mark said, you'll fill this place up. I don't think that's a very good idea. You might think it is, but it's not it's not going to fly one way or another, I don't believe. You know, I'm one of the guys, one of the few here that had to pay three thousand dollars to join this club. Okay, so I'm already three thousand dollars in the rear. I don't play that much anymore anyway. And I'm just trying to point out some things that uh is it's important. You're the same guy that want to give Advent Health a million bucks. We're going to get that money.
That was going to be assessment across the board to all the residents because it would benefit all the residents. We have eight hundred people who play golf uh, and three thousand residents.
So you're still you're still willing to do that?
Been taken off the table.
That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think we need a uh, any more discussion from the board?
I just want to know what we're doing.
Again, based on Mr. Hoteling's comment, I I I think that that we we do take a vote in order to determine what what the board direction is, but we'd have to bring this back at the next meeting as an as an official resolution and an official uh, agenda item.
So essentially, we we would be voting to bring it back to the next board meeting?
Correct. With those with those
We're going to vote to bring back the Deer Run irrigation problem to the next meter.
No.
No.
Yeah, well, because the agenda item that would that's you know, I'd say the the item that's on the agenda and Mr. Hoteling voted no, so he can, you know, not necessarily put it up for reconsideration, but there is a his his proposal is is that we approve the project on a contingent, you know, contingent on the fact that we set up this the this uh, assessment to the membership. So we don't but that obviously that will take some personnel, district personnel will have to prepare some documentation. We'll have to do some work. There's no reason to do that work if the board's going to vote it down. So what we're been looking for is board direction to move forward with Mr. Hoteling's plan or not.
Okay. Let's vote.
Supervisor Hoteling?
In that my goal was to be able to approve it and take advantage of the current price, I'm going to vote no.
Good.
Supervisor Brooks?
I didn't hear what Mr. Hoteling said.
He was trying to get approved immediately so to take care of the take advantage of the current price.
He voted on his resolution?
He voted no, yes.
He voted no on his own resolution?
Correct. His own motion.
Uh.
Because he was hoping to get it to pass today. That can't happen. We can't pass this today based on what's on the agenda because this is a whole new
No.
Agenda. Okay.
Supervisor Phillips?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
Okay. So this item is dead. Okay, the agenda item has been and the based on what's the what district personnel is now going to work on is to figure out a way to accomplish what Supervisor Brooks has recommended. And bring that back to the next meeting. And we'll see. Hopefully, the prices won't change too much.
Yeah, in all honesty, because we can't really vote on the meters, can we? There's nothing here on the meters.
No, and we're not going to either.
So that conversation that we start in October on meters, we may get done by April or May.
We're going to bring bring
This board's really effective.
Well, we're bringing the options back and uh, because of some of the financial implications of Deer Run and taking additional money out of the utility reserve fund. If we did the meter project and the golf course project, we would spend every bit of the reserve account and have zero money in the bank on the reserve side.
Why don't we just close up?
We're trying to look at some uh, oh, may be an option. Uh, we're trying to look at some options to bring forward and doing maybe a million dollars of the meter where we buy the equipment and then finance the top end to put some flexibility in it in case you guys voted to move ahead today and and we were short on cash to do the utility work.
Well, Chris, you got to understand
This is
the water the water has to be done. The meters have to be done, have to be done in full. We have the money. As a matter of fact, we're getting the money to do the golf course from the water. So why would we even hesitate on doing the meters? That has to be done. The irrigation doesn't have to be done. The water department is in such bad shape. And we need the meters. There should be no discussion in this board that it's fully funded and fixed.
Let me counter that.
So I don't I don't think you need to worry about we're financing part of that water thing. Get that in front of us. That has to be done.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we need to fix our water meters and our water department. That's a must. And and that's where we get our money.
True, and we ran into that same situation that the golf course did. The original budget to do the meters was one point two five million and we're looking at one point six to one point eight.
Well, and 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 we do that.
Nobody in this district can make a damn number right. I mean, one point two becomes one point eight. Your one point two becomes one point seven. I mean, my God, how is a board supposed to operate in the dark like that? I mean, that's something that is totally unacceptable. If this was your own company, you'd fire everybody that did it. It's ridiculous.
Numbers are right in front of you.
Well, in fairness, part of it is inflation and particularly in the petroleum end of the impact PVC.
Exactly.
So it it is a problem, but I I would like to counter that there shouldn't be any discussion because I think there should be. I think we have a problem with our water meters. But the fix is not necessarily replacing all the water meters. We have a staffing issue with our water system. And we may well want to prefer to, and it certainly is my preference, that we take care of the staffing issue and hire some people that can not only be cross trained in running our water system, but be used to manually read the meters on a regular basis. So we're not doing the estimates, but we're not spending two million dollars on new meters when we've had a problem in the past with new meters that promised the moon and delivered the desert. So I I certainly hope to discuss the meters before we approve two million dollars. And and again, my recommendation is let's look at staffing the water division so that we can read the meters and train a staff. And when we've got to train staff, we can relook at the meters, at which point hopefully we will have some mitigation resolved with our past meter system uh, to help pay for the new meters.
Our utilities pay for the the water. We have to justify what we're charging now.
We we can use that water to pay for the staff that we need to properly run the water management.
And and I would recommend that you get the staff. You should already be working on the staff right now because we have the money to pay for the staff now.
We don't have it in the budget.
Well, we can change that. We need staff.
That's part of a discussion we need to have.
There's no discussion. We need staff. We have a water department that needs eight people. We got two or three or four. That's I I don't know how it got to that in the past. But that's not it. It really isn't a, I mean, we can discuss it, but we need more people.
And that will be one of the options we're bringing forward the next meeting.
You know, I I I agree that we do a lot of talking, but we need we need to do stuff. And the water department has been a mess for three or four years, which nobody's fault here, other than maybe we should have put our nose into it and start asking more questions. But but what why we need to get it fixed.
If water is such a pressing issue, why is it not on the agenda for this week?
Because he said he needed more time.
Because from the time of the last meeting with the board and when Meter Sis was here, you had uh, three days to get the agenda items prepared.
The last meeting with the board after the two presentations, we said, okay, all we need now is a chart showing the various companies and comparing the various companies so that we can make a decision. And that decision was supposed to be made at this meeting. So do we have a chart? No. I mean, I give
Okay, that's
There's a reason that we have these meetings, you know, and people don't go back and do what they're supposed to do from the meetings that we have. It's a joke. It is. Go back and when the when the audio comes up, you go back and listen to it, and it's going to say that we said we want to see a chart on the various companies on the meters so that we can make a decision at this meeting. That's what you're going to see. That's what you're going to hear. Nothing.
Okay, we're going to go to action agenda number B. Stormwater facilities plan proposal for SRF funding by Polston Engineering in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, this is need a motion.
Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Who is here to talk about that?
And I'll I'll address that issue. The stormwater facilities plan for SRF funding last summer, the board started moving toward um, applying for a grant from the state for approximately five million dollars to rehabilitate the stormwater systems um, within the district. But that application for funding, just like the utility project that was bought back last month, requires a facilities plan. There wasn't anything done since June when these discussions first started up. So this is allocating requesting proposal of January fifth from Polston Engineering not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for developing a facilities plan that is required to apply for the state revolving loan fund for our stormwater system improvements. And again, if you want to apply for the SRF money, you have to have this facilities plan in place. It gives you you're required to have three different options. You're required to have a financial sustainability plan. And if we want to apply for SRF funding, we have to spend this twenty thousand. It was an item that was not budgeted. And uh, our recommendation was to transfer funds from general roads and drainage, ten thousand dollars and ten thousand from engineering fees to cover it. And if the board wants to move forward with applying for an SRF loan, we can do this or we can delay it to another time.
Any comment by the supervisor?
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this has to be done for us to get the monies, right?
Correct.
So for any any chance of getting any funding for the five million dollars supposed number, we have to do this.
If the only available option, we don't have any grants available for that money, the avail the best option is state revolving loan fund because of the low interest rate and then you can spread that payment over twenty years and the people that'll benefit from it, the new residents will be the ones moving in, it'll be the ones paying for most of it.
Okay, let me ask you this. There's some there's some questions on the validity or the how how valid the five million dollars is. That was done by Polston. Originally, it was ten million dollars, which I believe was submitted to the county. And then when the county refused it, it came down to five million dollars and was then presented to us. Is this twenty thousand that we would spend buy us verification on that on what needs to be done?
Yes, sir. It would be uh, engineering analysis and get get your numbers a little harder. And this is exactly what you're sending up to the
So they will take this list and go out So they will take this list and go out and verify it and reestimate it based on today's world?
Yes, sir, and turn it into a facilities plan, which again, it have three options of approaches that you can take. They always make you identify three different options. It's not like, hey, give us the money, we're gonna go do this, well, let's look at Plan A, B, and C. And one of those options is do nothing. And where the pressure's coming is increased housing and some of the dilapidated state of the infrastructure, you know, the stormwater as these people move in and their streets are stacked up in water, they'll say-
I for one think it's a good, I think we got to find out if this $5 million is really legit.
Yeah.
And this, this verifies it.
Yes, sir.
And we can, and we either identify the problem that we have and we can go forward from there. I think this is probably one of the better spends we would have.
I agree.
Neil, you got anything to say?
In full agreement.
Okay. A public comment. And just for the audience, the $5 million you're talking about is not, we're not going to spend $5 million automatically. It's, we can pick and choose, but we certainly need to do some work on drainage here. And grant money goes along with it, so we're not spending $5 million. We're just looking at it.
And I would like to include in, because the thing that you sent out is not necessarily the whole report that we got. The report that I got listed everything and then enlisted them, relisted them again in what they thought were the priorities.
Yes, sir.
So this report that we asked for, I would love to see a total report and then have them prioritize it as well. So if we decided we just wanted to do portions of it, we knew, we would know where to start.
Yes, sir. And that facilities plan, you know, requires a, a work plan and work schedule and a work project. You know, if you're gonna do it over three years, five years, and you lay that out in the priorities, much the way you did your road projects.
Okay.
There was the streets were most in need of repair.
Okay, Kelly, I think we're ready.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Thank you.
C is Resolution to Highlands County Pave Schumacher Road. I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
I'll take on this. Okay, so basically what this is, is a resolution to go to the county and, and to, basically to authorize the general manager and myself to go and start working with the county to try and make the Schumacher Road-Cortez connection happen. Basically just to start the process, to get on their radar so that we're, we're not, because the original project, I say that, but I think that based on my research back in 2014, this kind of got started. 2017 was when things kind of fell apart because the county was asking for more money than, than we were willing, the district was willing to spend. And so now we're basically going back and trying to get into their long-term plan and, and basically authorizing the general manager to take, and myself to take on that burden of putting together something and getting it on the, getting it on the county's agenda to, to vote on. So that hopefully, when it, when it does finally come up for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners, we can have a presence there and, and hopefully get it accomplished.
Any comment by the-
Yeah, I have a question. So this requested motion that I'm reading here, is that what we actually sent to them? Is that-
No, there's a, there's, I mean, there's a resolution that's asked, but basically this is just to authorize the general manager to start this process, to give him the authority to go and speak on behalf of the board and make these requests to the county.
Well, I think it's important, and again, speaking only for myself, that we show, we show some good faith to the county. And I would like to see us commit to extending Cortez on our own dime if they do Schumacher on their dime.
Well, yeah, I think that's the, that's the intent.
That's what we're moving in.
The motion doesn't say anything about that, so I don't-
That's what, that's what we intended it to be.
Yeah, and that's to go negotiate that. So that's, I mean, that's the-
I, I wouldn't call it a negotiation, I'd say this is our deal.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, we have to go, that's what, I guess that's the, we're asking for the, the general manager, there needs that authority to go to the county. So that's what this resolution would do, was send the general manager, instruct the general manager, give him authority to negotiate with the county to try and come up with a deal that accomplishes that and then bring that deal back to the board for approval.
Okay, let, let me try to clarify my understanding. My understanding is we've talked to staff and staff very negative on this. And what we need to do is get this in front of the Board of Supervisors, let them know the Sun and Lake Board is very serious about wanting this done. And we need the supervisors to step in and direct staff to help make it happen.
Being the commissioners, not the-
Commissioner, yeah.
And, and that's what I think. I, I can, I can speak too for, I, I don't know if I'd want a negotiation because it was pretty firm, five to nothing, that we would do this Schumacher extension if the county extended it to there. It was adamant that we do not participate in anything to do with Schumacher Road.
No, yeah, yeah, I, I think we understand that.
Not a negotiation.
No, and we'll see, I guess that's, maybe that's what, the, it is a negotiation because we're trying to convince the county to do what we consider it to be its part. We want the county, the district wants the county to extend Schumacher. And if, up to Cortez, and if the county is willing to do that, then the district is willing to extend Cortez to connect with Schumacher. So, and that's, say, that's the deal that was up for consideration back in 2017 that was voted down because the county wanted more money and the district was not willing to spend it. So that's why it got voted down in 2017. So what, what this resolution is attempting to do is to authorize the general manager to go back, talk to the county commissioners, get it on their long-term plan and say, this is something that the district is very interested in making happen. And we want it, you know, it may not happen this year, may not happen next year, but we want it on the counties, because right now the county isn't even considering. As far as, you know, as far as the district knows, this is not anywhere in the long-term plan of the, of the county. So what we're saying is that the, the Board of Supervisors of Sun and Lake wants this to happen. What do we need to do to make it happen and where can we get it on to the long-term plan for the county? And that's what we're asking the authorization to do.
Well, I, I guess that's it, but I, I wanted it on their agenda to let the commissioners vote up or down. That's what I-
Oh, yeah, that's the goal, that's the goal. But we don't have any ability to force them to put it on their agenda. So that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to come up, negotiate, negotiate a plan that is, that's agreeable to both of the board and the county commissioners. And then bring that back, because we, the board will have to approve it first. We'll say, if this is approved, Chris and I and district staff will go work, work with the county, come up with a plan, bring that plan back to the board for approval. And then take that, hopefully, that, that will, if we approve it, the board approves it, it gets put on the Highlands County Commission agenda and voted on by the county commissioners.
That's fine, and I think we already nominated my counterpart to my left, Mr. Hoteling, to be part of these conversations, representing the board. Did we not?
Well, we, we did that, but I went, I went with Chris, but-
This was after.
Yeah, but-
I think, I think Hoteling should go with him.
It's, in my mind, it's, it's, I, I don't like the word negotiate because I, I don't think the board wants to negotiate. We want the county to pave the road out there. And I'm not willing to spend, just myself again, almost a million dollars to, to extend Cortez. And that's what basically what they're asking us to do.
No, we're just want, we're just wanting to get on the agenda. We're not asking for anything solid.
Cortez is 270,000.
Yeah, but that's, that's our part, but they want us to pay half of-
They were wanting us to pay.
I'm saying Cortez itself is 270, so what I'm saying is, let's, let's, we'll give them the two, we'll pay the 270 and let them take care of their own road and pave it.
And I think we got something addition to that rate of 200 and some thousand from, from somebody that they, they weren't sure that-
I don't know, this is-
Part of the bridge. Did I read something there? Something additional? Seventy, okay. But I think the board is all, all in for the addition to extend Cortez, it's the other part.
Yeah, and I think that's, like I say, that's the goal, is right now this is not on the county's radar. The county has no plans, at least to our knowledge, to extend Schumacher Road anywhere. So that's what we're trying to do, is give the general manager authority to start that process and start saying, hey, county, we want this on your radar, what do we have to do? What do you need from the district? How can we facilitate making this happen? Because, like I say, the district represents of, you know, 3,000, 4,000, you know, property owners or not property owners, but residents that, you know, utilize or would utilize potentially that road. So.
And just to clarify, we're not asking for extension of Schumacher, we're asking for the paving of Schumacher.
Correct.
But we would encourage county, look at extending it so that it becomes access road through to 64 before emergency. Other than that, there may be some extra funding from the state to help create an emergency egress, egress from the county. Way that the county could help fund paving and extend. At this point, we're mostly concerned getting Schumacher.
Is there any other comment by the supervisors? Uh, Scott, I'll get to you first, or second, but I'll ask for a public comment and then we'll put you to talk.
Mark Camp, resident. Since I'm not privy to all the information that everybody has here. You said $270,000 for the Cortez extension?
Yes.
Oh, that went up considerably, huh?
Yeah.
Up from 50,000 to 270,000?
Yep.
Wow. Anyway, my, my real question is, and hopefully somebody, maybe even Scott can answer it. Isn't Sun and Lake Boulevard owned by the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we know we have a lot of homes coming in and this is one of the reasons we wanted to do Schumacher, or the Cortez or Schumacher. The only other outlet would be Sun and Lake Boulevard. Would the county be responsible and need to widen Sun and Lake Boulevard? Is there any responsibility on their part to do that?
In, in, I could just give you my, in my opinion, yes, they'd have to do that. And if they don't, you know, we, we've got somebody, you know, prominent homes is, is, is gonna start soon.
You know, 300 homes.
306 lots that they bought. Those cars got to go somewhere. And I, in my opinion, the county has to help. I mean, they have to because it's either widening Schumacher, or not Schumacher, but widening Sun and Lake Boulevard, or maybe helping out and extending Schumacher Road to Cortez to give us another outlet. But if the place keeps growing, it's, it's, and we got Mr. Horneck building right over here too, so. And in my mind, that's not a Sun and Lake problem. Where I came from in Indiana, that's, the county would be very involved in that, doing what they have to do because people are moving and building homes in, in areas and so on and so forth. That's why I'm adamant that they just do things different in Florida. That's, that's all, and that's the way they do it. But there is a need for access in and out of Sun and Lake more than what we have now. And that's not our problem, other than we can help as much as we can to get to Schumacher Road. And I don't know if that helps the explanation.
Well, it definitely helps the explanation. We just follow up one of the question to that. So let's say hypothetically, they do not want to pave Schumacher. Okay, they just don't want to do it. Of course, that's going to create a huge problem for, for us. Is there any, I mean, do they have to widen Sun and Lake Boulevard or can they say, hey, that's your problem, you're gonna back up to? Do you have a feel for that, David, maybe, or?
What they're, what they're required to do, I don't know what they would be required to do. Like I say, we have the, there's, I think, technically three entrances to the district. There's Sun and Lake Boulevard, there's the Schumacher Road entrance, and then there's the, the north entrance. You know, if we start, I think that the best that we could do is if we start experiencing significant traffic issues, submit that as a traffic study to the county and say, look, this is what's, what's happening because we don't have, you know, we don't have enough access. And bring that up to the county. But I mean, that's-
But we, we also discussed at the last meeting that if, if we get turned down, that there is an alternative, I'm not gonna remember the name, there is another organization that we can go to that is in charge of traffic other than the county. We had that conversation at the last meeting.
Yes, sir, and that's the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which looks more at the state level roads and things like this cutting through to 64.
If we got turned down there, that would be someplace we could go to to-
We could try and get it in the regional plan with the DOT.
Yeah.
I was just trying to understand some of the options. Thank you for the explanation, it was very good. Thanks, thanks, Mike.
If I may, another intent of this whole resolution and getting in front of the board is start getting a dialogue and the Board of County Commissioners used to seeing us and talking to us and bringing some of these issues right in front of them.
Yes, I agree.
Tom Costi, resident. It's been a number of years since I've read the county's long-range plan, the 30-year plan. But five or six years ago, the extension of Schumacher, paving of Schumacher and the entrance to 64 through the district, which I believe at that time, I think it was when they, when they widened and paved Cougar, plan was to continue Schumacher all the way out to the end where there's a blueberry operation out there where they ship nationwide, they ship blueberries once a year. It's quite a lot of truck traffic takes place for several months. It's one of the reasons the county wanted to pave that road. People that own the farmland along the south side or the ranch land didn't want to pay for it. I mean, they, they, they own, they, they actually, they came, the county commissioner, Hanley, came to this board and proposed that we pay for half of the paving of Schumacher all the way out to the end. But there was in the 30-year plan, and it might still be there, to pave a road through the district all the way up through Avon Lake Estates, which goes along the west side of the airport up there, to provide access for the citizens of Highlands County all the way through the district, 264, to cut, cut off that traffic. That might already be on, I might still be on the long-range plan for, for the county. So I don't think it's necessarily strange to the county if we go to them and propose that again. That, that, I don't recall it came up during the last discussion about just going out to Cortez. But I think that's already in the, in the county's plans for the future.
Okay.
And I'd bring it up to them when we go to them, if we go to them with a proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Scott?
Certainly we'd be willing to answer any questions that I can, but I understand the motion in front of you is to authorize your general manager to start the conversations to see what this project would look like. So certainly I support that. That's why I'd set up the previous meeting that I believe Supervisor Hoteli was involved in. And, you know, the county has a policy when it comes to road paving and what have you. So let Chris start that dialogue. And if you direct Supervisor Hoteli to be your supervisor representative from your board, to be involved in those conversations, to be able to come back with a plan on what you folks are talking about here. This is how it needs to start, absolutely. You know, and then eventually, whatever that plan would be, that plan would come in front of the Board of County Commissioners to vote on that plan. And it would be an action agenda item that would be open for public comment, just like you have here. So, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces when you talk about extending roads and paving roads and what have you. I can tell you that all five commissioners are members of the Hardland Regional Transportation Planning Organization. That is, that is on state-funded road projects and long-range road, long-range road plans. And I can tell you, we meet quarterly. And that is not on the long-range plan right now on HRTPO, the Harlem Regional Transportation Planning Organization. So, hey, that is, that, that is not anything that's been brought to my attention. But simply here today, I think they're just looking for authorization to start the conversations and be able to bring something back to your board on what county staff and what have you is willing to recommend to their board for approval.
That, that I think is where we have the deadline. From, from our meetings with county staff, they're not willing to bring anything to the Board of Supervisors.
I mean, that's.
And, and that's why we need to find a way to get it directly to the Board of Supervisors.
Commissioner.
Then I think you need to authorize Chris to direct exactly what language that you want placed on the agenda as your commissioner. Our request that it gets, puts on one of our future agendas coming up for consideration from our entire board. Absolutely. But you have to understand that if you're going to ask the entire board on one of five, you need three of us to approve any change in the current policy that the county has when it comes to paving roads. That's not my decision only. That's this, that's a board decision that has to be made by the county commissioners. If you want to put something on the agenda that is not the current policy the county commission follows, you're certainly free to do that.
Yeah, see, that, we had the same, same thing here. Not one of us can make that decision.
Correct.
But what, from the meeting with, with your staff, and that's why I said when David used the word negotiate, we, there's no negotiation with the staff. I mean, they have told us what they're.
Yeah, but the staff doesn't decide. The board decides. The board makes those decisions, but.
That's why we wanted to get it to the board and not, we've already heard from the staff.
Well, if you want to either give Chris the authorization or as your county commission, if you want to give me the language in an email that you want to go in front of our board for a vote, I'm not gonna suggest that you do that. I'm gonna suggest that you go through the process, go to them and say, listen, we will extend Cortez. We don't want to pay a dime when it comes to anything on paving Schumacher Road, okay? Staff will say, okay, if that's what you want to bring in front of this board, then we'll put it on the agenda and we'll let our board discuss it, just like you are here. But keep in mind, everybody here is a county taxpayer also. And if we vary from policy on our paving schedule, you have to convince three commissioners to adopt that because then everybody else that has a policy to follow when it comes to paving roads will then come to the table and want their roads paved also and not sharing the cost of that. There's a reason that there's a policy when it comes to paving shell rock roads in this county. So I have no problem with this being on our agenda and our board hearing this. And I would meet with our engineering department, our road and bridge department, and I would see what the ramifications on a vote either way would mean to the taxpayers of Highlands County. And that's exactly what I would do. But there's a lot of moving pieces to what you folks are talking about here. There's another, I talked to our county engineer about this a couple of weeks ago. There's concerns from FDOT about increasing the traffic load on Schumacher Road. If any of y'all have been down towards the Highway 27 end with the side entrance to Walmart, coming out of the bank in Walgreens and what have you, it is a mess.
It is.
Okay? So that is something that we would have to get clear to the state also to increase the traffic load on Schumacher Road. That if any, any modifications are gonna have to be done on the Highway 27 end. Because when you start backing up traffic on the highway, trying to get onto Schumacher Road and what have you, there are studies involved that all of this has to go through the process. So I can tell you that if you want it on the next agenda of the county commission meeting for them to approve paving Schumacher Road and you extending Cortez, I don't think you got much of a chance. Because there's gonna take a lot more due diligence in that process to get that done.
Scott, when, uh, Chris and I met with your staff, they, they brought up the 27 down there by Walmart. But again, that's, you know, and I might be wrong. But have you thought about all the growth that's gonna be here in Sunland Lake? And I'm, I'm concerned about down there, but that's not a Sunland Lake problem.
Absolutely.
I mean, are, are you wanting us not to let people build homes here?
No, no, we need to build homes. We need to bring them into our tax base, just like you need to for the improvement tax base.
That's all I'm.
Absolutely.
Isn't that something you guys should be looking at already? The growth at Sunland Lake and what you're gonna do with roads?
That's what we've been talking about. We've talked, we've been talking about the recent sales of the lots last year.
Okay.
Okay? And development, and that's, I thought that's what we were working on moving forward. But it sounds to me like your, your staff, your general managers have put a resolution in front of you that you're, have a second on right now to vote to instruct to proceed him to continue these conversations.
Yeah, well, it, it wasn't really that, but we, we want more conversation. But just so you're aware, that we have no control of anything other than we need to get our people in and out of here.
Yes, sir.
And, but that's not up to us. That's a county or state thing. Because, you know, we're taking care of it up to our borders, but I think the commissioner.
Normally it falls on the developer in a private community. You're an improvement district. Your vote is maintained by you, okay?
Schumacher Road is not a development.
If somebody, if somebody comes right now, wants to build a new community in, in Highlands County, okay? They're going to have to, they, they have to provide documentation that they have wastewater and potable water that's available to them, okay?
And we got that.
They have to have a sidewalk and a drainage plan. They have, also have to get signed off by the appropriate state agencies when it's borders a state road on ingress and egress into that community. There's a whole process of doing that.
Yeah, but that's, we're not talking about, uh, that's, we have our developers here are doing that inside of Sunland Lake. They're paying for the infrastructure inside of Sunland Lake. We're not in charge of, of, uh, roads outside of Sunland Lake.
That's correct.
And, and we are growing. And I don't want this to blow up all of a sudden and have 500 new homes here and, and people can't get in and out. We are, we're bound by schools on both sides, on two of our entrances now.
Yes, sir.
And having problems coming in and out. I mean, I hear all the time from people that, because of the school traffic and so on and so forth. We, I just want you guys aware and you guys to start talking about it. I'm not bad at anybody in particular, but this, this is a, a problem that's not ours.
Well, it's, it's, it's a problem for Sunland Lakes and a problem for the county.
Well.
You, you've got a community that is adding more homes, okay? That has created an ingress and egress problem, in your opinion, that needs to be addressed. And that's what we're here talking about right now, is addressing those problems.
Well, I thought the.
I can tell you, we look at everything as a fiscal impact to our board like you do. So, and I told you, if there's something we need to put into our 22, 23 budget and have you, but the first step is to get the project in front of the county commission. And, and county staff, the county administrator is gonna have to know what that proposal is gonna look like and what our agenda packet will look like. They may look at Sunland Lakes is requesting for the county to pave Schumacher Road with the understanding that they're going to pay the cost to extend Cortez to Schumacher Road. And then our staff will look with the fiscal impact of paving Schumacher Road, which all has to be shifted to the north. That we've discovered that if we're going to pave that road, it has to be shifted to the north to address the appropriate drainage that is gonna be required. And that would be put in from the five county commissioners on what the fiscal impact and where that money would come from in county dollars. And that's the process that I believe that your staff is looking to start now. I'd be willing to continue to be involved in that and monitor that as it moves forward. But it would be a board decision for our board as well.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with you 100%. And we're doing it because we're worried, we wanna get something out to there. But from there on, it's not, because we're requesting it, you guys should be working on knowing that you've got, you've got some traffic problems coming, whether it's on Sunland Lake Boulevard or whether it's on Schumacher Road or, or the other exit out that way.
There is nobody else that has come to the county to request to pave Schumacher Road other than Sunland Lakes. Okay? There's nobody else. And, and I can tell you, we're not, we're not looking at paving Schumacher Road if you're not going to extend Cortez.
Well, we've already said we're, we're gonna extend Cortez.
Then have your general manager put your, put your proposal in front of the county administrator for our board to consider. It's, it's, it's really that simple. It's you authorize your general manager to put your exact proposal that you want the Board of County Commissioners to consider to our county administrator. He will get with our county chair, and she will put it in, request that it's placed on the agenda. And it will come up for discussion, just like it is coming up with your board today. That's it.
That's all we can do.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And like I say, we want, we, while we want to accomplish that, we also want to have county, that we want the county staff to recommend that to be approved by the board. So that's the job, is to sit that, sit down and negotiate something that the board will approve and hopefully will be recommended to the county to approve. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
I, I agree, but it just, you know, they've already recommended. Their recommendation was for us to spend, uh, to, we spent half to, to do Schumacher Road.
Yeah, that was five years ago, so that's the same.
No, that was just.
Well, that, that, that is, that is the current county policy.
That we, we just.
For that 50% split to pay Bay Shell Road. So if, if you're asking for the policy to be changed, that has to be put in front of our board to change that policy.
I'm calling the five-minute rule. Listen, it's kind, it's very obvious. If we wanna go further with this thing, we gotta approve this resolution. You've gotta go work with them.
Yes, sir.
If we don't want to approve it, throw it in the trash. To hell with it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, why do we keep talking about this more?
Because there's another avenue that he has brought up that I think we need to discuss.
What?
He's brought up another avenue that I think we need to discuss that I hadn't heard before. And that's the Heartland Transportation Board. Should we work at getting this on their radar so that they can look at extending Schumacher to 64? In which case, who, would that still be a county issue or would it go beyond the county?
You'd have Chris reach out to staff. He will put them in contact with our regional, Heartland Regional Transportation Organization Coordinator, okay? And certainly, and those meetings would be open to you folks also, that if you wanted to come to those meetings and something that you would want, and they could probably answer a lot of those questions when it comes to extending a road that would eventually go out to a state road or what have you. They would be involved in that process? Absolutely.
And I, I think we need to amend the resolution to have, uh, staff and our attorney work with both the county and the Heartland Regional Transportation Organization, uh, to.
Can you hear any of this?
Move this forward.
Put my ears in. What are we amending it to? I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Just to add to Heartland Regional Transportation Organization, which is the.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, the, 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 the next step up. So.
When do we get to first base before we hit the home run?
Wanna come back?
Oh, come on.
Mark Camp, President. First of all, I, I don't see any reason why you guys wouldn't work to, and vote to say, yeah, let them get together with them. But let me ask you, is there any reason that we can't put Cortez connection directly to Schumacher on our own dime? Now, I realize driving down Schumacher would be bad cars because it's that clay or whatever, sandbag. Can we, we own that property. Can we not make a cut through there?
Uh, we, Mark, we were told that they would not approve that by the county staff because that, that was one of our recommendations. They would not approve us to extend Cortez onto the shale or gravel or whatever. We were told that at the meeting we had.
Okay.
I mean, and.
Problems, all kinds of questions. So in other words, we're back where we were in 2017 with it. That if you don't pave Schumacher, you can't put Cortez through.
That's what I mean. It's, you were on the board with me.
I remember. Thank you.
And that's why I'm so adamant about it, because I've been involved in the, it's. But we did try to just extend Cortez to the gravel, and they said no. Okay?
Yeah, and if we would've spent the $100,000 three or four years ago, we wouldn't have this conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they didn't, they did that at the last minute, so don't, don't, some of you don't know about. I think you better zip it.
That's not true, Ray. Ray, that's not true at all. They said they would not allow the cut through unless we paid for part of the Schumacher paving. That was what stopped it.
It was $100,000?
No, it wasn't $100,000 for Schumacher.
Of course. Okay.
Sometimes people get confused, but I, I agree. I think we ought to vote this through and, and start over again and let us start negotiating again. But in my mind, there's no negotiation, but we're, we're do this. We're try again. So it, do we want Neil's, uh, Neil, you wanna make a motion to amend that or?
He did.
He did.
Yet? Okay, was there a second?
There wasn't a second, yes.
Okay. I guess not. Neil, no fails from the.
Yeah, we may be able to, we may be able to accomplish it through, through county staff.
Yeah, that's right, just through the county.
Mr. Karak said that we can sit in on those meetings anyway, so.
Okay. Okay, Kelly.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes. Okay, number D, lift station structural rehabilitation proposal from MAXX Environmental in the amount of $13,140.
Joseph Sleva.
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Okay.
You're good.
Joseph Sleva, Supervising Utilities. Um, little background on the, uh, wet well itself. There's a tenant, Schenberk, coming from the elementary school. It is, uh, taking in water and causing the ground to cave in and also falling down the fence at this point. Um, the fence itself is to keep people out, and at this point, there's a gap under the bottom, and it is located right next to a school, elementary school with that. Um, I do see it as a safety issue for, uh, bystanders, if you will, and also my technicians, if they step back in there in the ground caves, somebody could be hurt or possibly killed. Um, as far as rest to go, we did repat, we did patch this, uh, leak two years ago. Tried to save some money and obviously it didn't work, so now we need to go in to seal the whole station. Um, Max has done, Max Environmental has done multiple lift stations for us. Um, and the product does work, supercoat. Um, so we do believe it will remedy this issue. Um, just other than that, uh, we do have the funding in the manhole and lift station repair line item. And basically, just presenting it to you for approval. And staff recommendation is to move forward with this for safety issues.
Okay, any questions from the supervisors? Public comment?
You're the last one standing. Okay. Kelly?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes. Item E, purchase 240, 42-inch HDPE pipe for stormwater system rehabilitation. Need a motion?
Motion.
A second? We have a second.
Yeah, two motions, one and two, a second.
Yeah. Okay.
In lieu of that.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it first. Okay. Who's gonna speak on this?
I will. This is a request to approve a quote by CIF Distributing Incorporated, date December 7th, for $18,000 for 240 feet of 42-inch HDPE inflow double-wall pipe rehabilitation of the stormwater system. We have a couple of projects that we need to get working on where we've had issues with the pipe being compromised. Um, Balmar is one location. And, uh, with pricing changes and the lead time to get this material, so we just wanna move forward and get the materials on site. So we have it when we're ready to start the project versus getting ready to start it.
That's our new excuse.
Any questions from the supervisor?
Oh, yeah. I got a question. First of all, where is the drainage proposal for this year? We're supposed to get one from Drew. We get one every year on what he's gonna do from a drainage standpoint, which is this account that you're talking about. I know we got one on roads, but I have not seen one on drainage yet. And the reason I bring that up is that we made an adjustment based on last year, how we finished up, a budget adjustment, taking that account to $304,000. We've already used 62,000 of that. This is another 18, which leaves Drew with whatever it is less. And I don't know how much Drew is planning on spending on drainage. So I would have a tough time in approving this until I knew what was going on in that account. Unless you're planning to do another best budget reserve, is it budget resolution? Amendment, budget amendment. Thank you.
Well, we, we have the money in that maintenance.
You have the money now. You have the money right this minute, yes.
Yeah, but is.
But what is Drew planning on spending from a drainage standpoint?
Yeah, this, this is reactionary with stuff that's collapsing.
What is Drew planning on spending in, in the drainage account? I mean, we're in January, so we probably should have that presented to us. If you're all comfortable, you can live within the budget and Drew can accomplish what needs to be accomplished from a drainage standpoint, and that's fine.
I will ask him about that plan, and, uh, he was, uh, George and him and I sat down and looked at these two projects where the ground was collapsing. where the ground was collapsing next to the road, and that's what we're trying to leave.
I know, but he owes us a drainage plan. He gives it to us every year. I don't know what he, like I said, the roads we got. He gave us the road plan, but he did not give us the drainage plan. So I was just wondering.
Does the rest of the board agree with Ray? Uh, because I think a lot of these problems that we're having is Ray's asking for stuff and we don't get a consensus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And he expects that to come back without a consensus.
If you don't think that's important, Mike, then let's have that conversation.
Should I I think everything is important, but you you need a board consensus before we start expecting stuff to be brought back. I mean, I can't just say I want this and expect it to come back.
You're the president of the board.
Do we have? I'd I'd like to to recommend that we get this from Drew and we ask. We we ask Chris to do this. Do we have board consensus of this?
Yeah, I I think. Yeah, I think.
Okay. Yes.
This needs to move forward. I don't want anybody hurt.
Right. I I think we we are in consensus that we need to have the plan for where we're going to spend the drainage money this year, but this is a priority item that I think we need to approve.
Yes, me too, but I I still think.
Let's vote.
I still think we need consensus to have Drew give us what they asked for.
I think you've got.
We need a consensus to get a drainage plan that we get every year?
Yeah, if if that's if we're going to expect it to, if we're just going to say something at a meeting, expect it to come back. So let's vote on. We have a consensus, Chris, for you to do that. And so now we'll vote on the uh. Is it?
No, I know.
Number F, yeah.
Public comment.
Oh, is there any public comment? Okay. Vote.
Supervisor Brooks?
Am I voting on this amendment?
On E.
No.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Hoteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes. And Chris, make sure you get that.
Yes, okay. And uh, it's similar to around the corner here where you see the cones on the road. The drainage structure is compromised, the pipe is, so it's taking soil right down in it. It's creating miniature sinkholes all along the roadway there. So we just, and also before we get started on the project, we wanted to make sure we could get the pipe in a timely basis because I didn't want to ask you to approve a project. And two months later, you're going, when are you going to get started on that? And I go, well, I'm waiting on pipe. So.
Yeah, well, it's something we need.
Do we need to vote on my request for a drainage program?
No, we need to.
We gave a consensus on that.
We've already given the consensus yet.
Yeah. I'll ask.
But it is a good idea to do the consensus. So you guys are directed not by just one of us, but by the board. Okay, uh. What's the next one here?
Yep.
Yep.
That's I.
Workshop plan.
Yeah, that that's item an F and and uh, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, but I like to set aside an hour for a board workshop, which is you're really not making motions and voting. You're really just having a general discussion. And we wanted to get together with the board. I I have a list of staff priorities, uh, the organizational chart and go over all this with the board to put together plan for the next year, our goals and objectives. You have a nice strategic plan with a lot of good, solid goals in it, but there's no objectives, how you're going to accomplish those goals. Um, so we really want to get a sense to convey the staff priorities to the board and also have the board take an opportunity to rank priorities to give us. And that'll basically drive the budget creation for the next year. And also trying to create a clear vision to take that strategic plan and that work plan and put it all the way down through the organization, all the way to the bottom and get everybody's buy-in. Here's what we're doing. This is why we're doing it. And we're trying to benefit you and we're trying to benefit the organization with it. So it's really just setting aside one hour.
You can't do anything in an hour.
I don't think we can do this in an hour.
Not this board.
Why don't we give a?
Want to vote on it?
Yes, yeah, let's vote.
Why don't we give it a a month or so?
I think I think it's a good idea.
I do, too.
I have no problems in doing it. I think the next meeting would be very difficult.
Yes.
Because of what we've already pushed.
Yes.
And the fact that it's a landowners meeting. So I think at the earliest, you're looking.
Eighteenth is what we're looking at.
I'm sorry?
The eighteenth is what is the is the proposed date.
Oh, he's proposing the eighteenth?
February the eighteenth.
So two weeks after, so four weeks from today.
And.
Okay, that might make sense.
Is that the second meeting of the one, the eighteenth?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of this I don't want to wait on. I mean, your staffing is, to me, is critically important. And it's not the. It's your staffing, not the board's staffing.
Right. And and we're moving forward with our staffing initiatives regardless.
Have we hired anybody yet?
No.
Okay.
We we did, uh, we did recently hire in addition to the utility team and we're interviewing a couple more people for that position. And we did, I think, get a couple promising resumes for the board secretary.
No offense, but according to this, your utility team is pretty well full, unless you changed your.
No, it it for the budgeted positions for this year, it's full.
Yeah, on your utility team.
But we need.
You've got five openings that I could see. Is that correct? Huh? You have five people that you need to hire according to the sheet that you gave us.
Yes, two two in the utilities, one was recently hired to board front position, a permitting coordinator.
I'm just saying, there's unfilled five times on this piece of paper. So I assume there's five people that you're replacing or filling or what have you.
Yes, sir.
Right. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
But like we mentioned before, it's critical. You get the, I try to find the water people that we need. And if we have to add to the budget, we have to add to the budget.
You know, Mike keeps asking, where where is this? I don't understand. Where are the water people that he thinks we need?
Well, we're we're shorthanded across the board with trying to do locates, trying to do service work. We're we're not doing.
Is that not on this chart?
Are these not?
Not the additional positions.
They what?
Not any additional positions that we'll be requesting, and that's part of that workshop is what we're going to drive the budget for. If we need to do it sooner and we can, we will.
So this piece of paper that you gave us is not the piece of paper that you're going to try and sell us on?
That's the current situation and.
No, it's not the current situation. It's the one that you gave us.
Right.
With the unfilled positions on.
Correct.
So that's what you're trying to get to.
No, it's the budgeted.
It's budgeted. That's what's, that's what you have budgeted. Well, we have that workshop and I'll be bringing forward. And I'm trying to get candidates and adding three, possibly four more utility positions this year. And part of that will be contingent. Remember, we had one position we talked about adding for the meter project if we moved ahead.
So for this meeting, you're going to give us a chart that shows all the positions you want to fill?
Yes, sir.
So this thing is not.
Well, that's the current what we're trying to fill. I'll be asking to add a couple additional positions on the utility side.
Am I missing this?
No, we're just very, very understaffed and and we're running a water department that really, we don't know how it was even ran.
We we right now, we are not responding and doing any preventative maintenance. So it's all reactionary. And we do not have a a staff with the capability and size to service the development of this size and the number of customers we have.
Okay, I I'll just ask you one more question on this. So when you give us your new chart with with what you want.
Right.
Are you going to tell us if you can live within the budgets or are you going to tell us how much more we need to cover it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, yeah, and you said yes.
Yeah, that's what he's going to do.
That's all I.
Okay.
And that is confined to the utility department, you know, those critical needs.
So do we want to keep this at February eighteenth or?
That's yeah, that's the that's the question. As long as we have board consensus, it's going to be on the agenda for the February eighteenth meeting.
And and it probably will take longer, but we could get a good start on it. An hour in the direction we're going on.
I think I won't be there, but you can go without me.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we're, we just, we just need a consensus over here. Do we need to vote?
No, we need a consensus.
Okay, the eighteenth, do that.
Let's say eighteen.
Were you ordering lunch?
I told you, if if they go past eleven thirty from now on, we get lunch, just so you guys know that. And the new president, I hope, will stand behind that. Add-on item.
And we'll have menus.
Yeah.
Built out of the beginning.
Add-on items, Chris.
Um, don't have any.
Petitions and communications.
We did uh, have the requests from the folks on Metansus. Uh, they wanted to set up some speed tables. They provided a petition to us and that is now with the code enforcement and security, they're going to set up the sign and start getting the speed data in that area and then come back to the board. And we don't have a a line item to install speed bumps. It's just in the general maintenance and that's something we'd look to adding next year to the budget as an actual line item.
Okay.
So what are you, what are you asking for?
I'm I'm not.
Nothing yet, all right.
I suggest under the communications and also the folks in Manor Hill requested uh twenty streetlights, eleven is essential and nine is desirable. And we're looking into the cost and the process of doing that.
That uh, streetlights is something we do.
We we uh, are in the streetlight business to some extent. There's no budget for it or any line item for it. So if somebody wanted it, we'd have to find the money somewhere to do it. If it it was a gated community with private roads, I'd say have at it, call Duke.
Yeah.
How do we go about figuring out if this is a a good request or uh, not a good request? How do we do that?
Well, it you could go in and do a study if you wanted to of the lights. I don't think you need it. They have spacing standards for subdivisions and most of ours aren't compliant with those spacing standards. You know, a few lights were put in, so I'm just going to put a price to it and basically tell the residents, come to the board and ask them to put it in the budget for next year.
Okay.
So we we have roads and drainage and sidewalks, but I don't think the streetlights is in that banner of services.
But don't.
If we want to develop.
Am I uh, misunderstood that some people have put streetlights in and paid for it themselves? I mean.
And sir, we have had a few residents that have a light right in front of their house.
Yes, okay.
And they put them in on their own?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so. That's a good question. If they want it bad enough, they can do that, I guess.
I I live in Manor Hill and I agree. I don't think that we should be in light with all that's on our plate. You have a flashlight.
And there is, there is, uh, I've been on some streets. I'm, I live right across from this Gulf Village here and they got lights. And I go down the end of Metansus and it's dark. I mean, it's, I mean, there's a a big difference, so.
Well, I say, I don't think we have, I don't think there's any district policy involving streetlights. So I mean, if you want us to develop one, even if it just wanted to say that we're not going to be involved in it, that's, but it's up to the board. I don't know if that's something we want to even worry about at this point.
Yeah, I know. I agree with that. Do we need to state that now?
Yep.
No, I mean, if we can, unless someone, someone wants to make a motion that we develop a policy, I would just say that, look, we just, we inform people that call us. Say, look, there's no policy. The the board doesn't have a policy for installing streetlights. You know, you can contact Duke if you're interested in, you know, having one installed on your road.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Staff reports.
What about the rest of his? Oh, I'm not going over that.
What?
What?
Everyone's.
I thought he was going over this. I'm sorry.
And I guess you're first, Mike and Jim.
I just want one clarification before we go.
Okay.
And I know I'm beating a dead horse here. How do we get the golf irrigation for the year run back on the agenda for next?
I'll second.
How do we get that back on the agenda for next month?
You got to make a motion, right? Is that what we got to do?
I think we already directed a table, bring it back.
Yeah, I think the I think the 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 agenda or the agenda item that was voted down today has has been voted on. So now what we're, what what staff is going to be doing is trying to come up with a way to accomplish what Mr. Brooks talked about with leaving the, so we're at a six million dollar.
That's just Mr. Brooks's number. That's not necessarily anybody else's number.
Great.
And I would like to.
It's coming back, Bev, next decade.
Yeah, but I'd like to see it come back in the form of a resolution so that we can make a decision if we decide to approve it, we can do it at that meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
So we can, so we can go forward. I mean, this has been delayed and delayed and I.
Correct.
I'm tired of being the only, yes, though.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess.
But I will continue to be.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, supervisors, uh, one thing that the board has asked to bring back to you guys was in regards to our membership leave of absence uh, policies. Um, a a couple of supervisors has stated that it was insufficient and they were would, they wanted me to bring back some suggestions to the board. Um, I did email those to you. Um, and I know we're we're one supervisor short. Um, I know he was adamant about having this discussion. Um, but kind of the way I looked at it is we can, we'll have a discussion today and based on our discussion, I I can bring back a resolution to adopt changes that you guys would like to see today. So when I reviewed it, I spent some time with Andy and we reviewed this policy. The the way I kind of looked at it is when it comes to a leave of absence, there's basically three stages of your membership when you would ask for that. Um, one would be after you paid your membership in full, which was already the one that we had in place. So if you paid your membership in full and then halfway through the year, you got to have knee surgery. We then gave you half a year's credit on your next year's membership. Now, another, you know, kind of the same discussion we had last time with Mr. Howbig. So he paid, you know, they have the option of paying half their membership in October, the other half by the end of January. So if you're in the middle of that timeframe, that's a, that's what I would consider a second timeframe where you would ask for a a credit. So that would, the second one on here, so he paid his first half membership in October and his next one's due here in about ten days. So he had to take a medical leave, so he asked for his credit to be applied to his second half membership. So I consider that a second, the second phase of the membership where you could ask for a credit. Now, the board had off, had, we have, we went ahead and accepted that last time, so we've, we've actually processed that one. So we have set the precedent on that one.
With with the exception that if Mr. Howbig or any other member feels better in September and wants to play September to October one, he will then pay green Visa cards, correct?
I I well, I believe, I believe, yes, but I believe in his leave, I think he's planning on being back before the end of the year.
Then he will play.
So he will, so he will not, he's not getting a credit for the whole year. He he has a, he has a timeframe and based on whether that gets extended.
The credit could be split in half or quarters. Is that what you're saying?
Well, so he's, I think he's out till April. And I don't know exactly the start date and I can, I'll, I can follow up with the, with firm numbers on that. So he's only getting a credit for that small window.
So he he paid his first.
Right.
I understand that. I understand that.
And then couldn't use it, so it's credited forward.
Right.
And when he comes back, he should still be able to use it.
Right, he's he's, so say he's out three months. His three months was in the middle of his membership year. So that three-month credit is what he's going to get off his second half payment and then he'll be allowed to come back. I I want to say it was April one, but I can forward you that information for sure. Now, the last one, and I put it in here, I don't know if if the board is necessarily in favor of it, and I can't say that I am or not, would be to take them, if say you, say you were a snowbird and you had knee surgery over the summer and you were not going to start October one. The other, the other way, the other phase of a membership would be to come late in the year. So say I came in April and I wanted to have a membership at that time. You would take a medical leave and then it would be before your membership is paid, which I don't necessarily agree with because I don't think you can get credit for something you haven't paid for yet. But that's just the other option. I put it on here.
Is that, is that the paid option?
That that would basically, yes. So I I can't say that I necessarily agree with it, but that would be the other, that's the only other way I see that happening is is doing it late. So therefore, in that situation, if you were going to do it, they would basically just pay the proration till the end of the year.
And that's, I I, you can't do that for a snowbird. I I mean, you can't.
That's what I mean. It it I you know, when we had the discussion in prior meetings, like I said, I think the language we already had in there was good. If you wanted to have some exceptions to accommodate some other scenarios, then that would be something we would add on. So that's kind of what I brought back. So if we want to discuss the options individually to see if the board is in favor of them or not in favor of them, and then I'll bring back a resolution to the next meeting.
I thought we told you to handle.
You asked, you asked me to bring back some options.
Yeah, we we asked him to bring back options because Beverly, it it with all respect, in the past, way back before these guys were here, we had our people making those kind of decisions. And if Mark Camp is still here, uh, Mark and I spent a lot of time uh, because our management team was very, very lucrative and very creative on their membership. on their membership. We have straightened that out. And I gotta give Mark a lot of that credit because it was Mark and I that did it. Uh, we, we need to have rules that they go by. And if it doesn't work out, like in Pete's case, I felt bad for Pete, but Pete needed to buy a three month membership. And that's all we have, that's all we have. Because of his situation, I mean, he, he came, he didn't have any credit coming because he didn't pay in October. And he had his surgery during the winter.
Okay.
And it come down, he, he's just like I am now. If I want to play, I have to pay.
You have to pay what?
Pay, I have to pay full fifty dollars my chat.
No, 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 no. If you want to join in January.
Oh, no, I.
If somebody wants to join in January, what do they pay?
Well, it depends on what they're looking to do. If they want to get a three month or a five month or.
No, they want, they want a yearly, they're good, they want a yearly membership. They, they join in January, what do they pay?
So if it's a first time member, that is in, in, in their policy now, if, if this is the first time you've ever joined, you can get prorated to the end of the year. And then you start on the, then you're on cycle with everybody else.
Okay.
Now, if you've been a member in the past and for some reason you, say you were a snowbird and you didn't come in October and you decided to come in January, you're gonna pay a full membership or not join.
Wow.
That's the way it works.
Guys are nice.
Now, I just wanna, I just wanna remind the board that in our leave of absence policy, a member can only ask for this one time. They can't do it year after year after year. And after five years, they're granted a second one. So even in a situation with Mr. DeLongchamp or what we did with Mr. Howbig, they can't do it all. You could have knee surgery this year and then knee surgery next year. You're only getting it once.
You think that's fair?
I do think that's fair.
You think it's fair?
I do think it's fair. And, and, and also, also.
Why are we penalizing the memberships? I, I, I'm, you guys can decide what you want, but I, I got another problem with membership refunds. If a guy dies, you're only gonna give him up to six months.
Just, just.
So.
I mean, stay on what we're working on now.
Sure.
Bring that back.
So also, also to bring the attention of the board, that's, that's what, this is what, this is what the board has allowed me to do. But also another thing on there, it says exceptions to this policy must be approved by the board of supervisors.
Right.
So if Jimmy has a bum knee this year, we, I go ahead and grant him that. If he has a bum knee next year and wants a second one, I can bring it, I can, I can bring it in front of the board and you guys can decide.
Do you think, do you think that we have to entertain, if you're, if Jimmy's left knee goes down and gets operated on and then next year his right elbow goes down and gets operated on, he's gotta come to the board?
That's.
Or somebody's gotta come to the board?
That's the way the policy.
You think we gotta deal, do you think that's right?
That's, that's for, that's, that's the way it's written. That's for you to decide, not for me. But that's the way it's written.
Well, what would your input be? You run the damn place.
So my input would be, if you wanted my suggestion, I would, I would just accept one and two on here. I'd scratch the third one. And then I think we move forward and if there's any exceptions, which I've been here for eight years, I don't think of any, too many people that have had too many policies. It's not, I'm not gonna bring something to the board every month. It's, it doesn't happen very often. I brought one to the, I brought two to the board in my two and a half years here.
Yeah, I, I think that's good.
So accepting one and two with, thinking about accepting one and two and not three.
That would be my, if you, he asked for my opinion, that's my opinion.
Yep.
That was mine when I read.
Okay.
Do you? Why are we so opposed to giving people back the money in the current year that they pay for it?
So you're saying, so you go ahead and you pay for this year and then you paid in October one and then March, you're out for the rest of the year.
Yeah. Should we not give them the option to get their money back or having it applied to next year?
Well, that's.
You're, you're assuming that everybody's gonna live and be there next year.
Uh, right, so.
I don't, I don't, I can tell you, I don't think there's a thing wrong with that. That's part of running a business and that's what I think we're supposed to be doing here is.
Michael, you're calling this a business?
Yes, it is. Sun and Lake is a business.
Wow, we've come a long way.
Yeah. You just don't give stuff away all the time. They don't care what comes.
Now.
I'm not giving stuff away. I'm asking, should we give them back their money? It's not, it's not like I'm taking something that doesn't belong, didn't belong to them. You guys don't think, you think the policy is great the way it is? Fine.
Thank you. Now, go ahead.
So.
Your one and two is what you're.
So if that would be the consensus, if everybody agrees that we'll add one and two, scratch the third one and I will give it to Mr. Schumaker to put on the agenda as a resolution to adopt in the next meeting.
Sounds good to me. How about you, Neil?
My preference would be to increase the rates to the point where we make money and then prorate whether they join late or leave early for whatever reason. But if, if you want to approve what's suggested, I'm good with the first two. I, I don't think it's, from a business standpoint, I don't think it's the best solution. The best solution from a business standpoint is to raise the price where we're profitable and then prorate whatever needs to be prorated.
What's your opinion on that, Mike?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if I follow you. I mean, we're talking about just regular membership rates, period. And so it's kind of a little, I mean, you, you, I think, I think, which is fine, I mean, but I still think that still gives you the same, you're still in the same boat no matter what the actual cost is.
Well, except one of the, one of the reasons we don't give the money back is because we're losing money. And, and if we weren't losing money, it would be easier to prorate everything. So we're, we're still making money and we're not charging people for what they don't use.
All right. So I, I run, I, I follow that, but.
But that's, that's not what we're, that, that's never been the practice.
Okay, well, what's the consensus that we, uh, approve one and two?
I think I've heard three, right.
Okay.
I think.
Mine.
Let's try that one.
No.
Do, do we have to vote on that?
It'll come back.
It, it'll come back. It'll come back for vote. So it'll be.
Do that.
Yep.
Can I ask that other question about the other thing?
He's got a question.
Why? If a guy, if, if an annual member dies, why do we only give him six months? I mean, if he dies and there's ten months, I mean, the guy's dead or the woman's dead.
Right. I, I, I don't know where that got put into the policy. That's been here longer than I've been here, so.
I'd like to see it changed first.
I mean, if we're looking at it and, and everybody wants to do that, might as well do it now. I mean, why, I.
I didn't know we even had that. I, where I came from, if you died, you lost your membership. I mean,
Yeah.
there was no paying back if you died. I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like an annuity.
You're gonna put it in a casket or what?
Yeah, you, you put your money into an annuity and it, it pays you monthly as long as you're alive. Once you're gone, it's gone. It's not like there's anything left, so.
I didn't know we even had that, but I.
I kind of treated the membership.
I'll go along with what the majority wants, but I, I did not know we had a death thing.
It's on the same page. It's there twice.
I know, but I, I never, I never, until I read it, I didn't know.
Essentially, the, up to six months was a, a compromise that was provided for somebody who dies right after they renewed their memberships, but, um, the, the norm would be, you know, it's, it's not an equity position with the club. Here is, you're paying for the membership and if you're not there to use it, that's not the club's problem.
Okay.
Okay, just leave it there. Any other thing, Ray?
He's gonna bring it back with that out? You gonna change it or what are you gonna do?
I, but I, I consent, I think.
I mean, if you guys don't think it should be in there, tell them to change it. Or else it stays in there. I mean, you guys are saying you don't like it, so say you tell them that you don't want it.
Yeah, we could just take it out. Is that okay?
That's what you're all saying. I'm the only one that wants it in. You guys, if you want to leave it in.
We'll leave it as is. So, I mean, if you wanted to leave it as is.
It, it was a compromise that clearly the board came to at some other point. So I'm okay with leaving it in.
Okay.
Okay. Leave it as is. Okay. Uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, on the membership side. Uh, ran it this morning. We're at one million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, uh, as far as membership. Uh, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars ahead of last year's pace. It's about ninety-one percent of our budget. On the restaurant update, I've, I've been doing some texting back there. My goal is to be open fully for dinner tonight. I just got a couple more things to work through to make sure we're good to go. And then we're gonna be hopefully just back to normal.
I'm sorry, we back to normal now?
I'm gonna try to be back to normal for dinner tonight.
For tonight?
Um, that's my goal.
You still having entertainment tonight?
We are. We have right around fifty reservations for tonight. Right around fifty reservations. So, and, and that's, I mean, I could have changed since, I, I could have changed since.
You know, you published it a couple of days ago.
Right.
Okay.
Um, best guess, so we've been operating about half speed here for about a week. Um, I think if I gave it my best guess, it's about a fifteen thousand dollar revenue loss. Um, you know, we obviously did our best to save labor during that, but folks have PTO, um, they just use their PTO, so we did the best we could to save labor in that situation. I, I couldn't remember if I brought this up in the last meeting, but I meant to. The Heartland Association of Realtors has their annual banquet here every year. Obviously, the last two years, I think they postponed it or didn't have it. But that is, uh, slated for February tenth. That's a Thursday night. We've always closed a building for them in the past. So they have made that request. So I just wanted to give you some numbers on that. And when we've had that event in the past, it's about seven thousand dollars in revenue. That doesn't include the lunch revenue, so lunch revenue is still on top of that. Uh, a typical Thursday average for an entire day is about four K. So I'm guessing we're about doubling our revenues uh, by doing that. Um, that was one of the events we've done for a long time, so we've grandfathered that into, to go ahead and let them use the entire building.
Yes, February the what?
Tenth.
Yeah.
Thursday, the tenth of February. So I wanted to.
So you're asking us if we're okay with you closing the restaurant? Is that what you're doing?
Well, I'm hoping you're okay with it.
He's already did it.
It's already done. That's one of those events.
It's supposed to be that way around, right?
Well, when we had, no, when we had these discussions in the past, we said if I brought you any new ones, that you would approve them. This is, this is one that at the time was grandfathered that we would do. We just haven't done it the last two years because of COVID.
You, you close for the whole day?
We will be closed for dinner. We will offer lunch and, and since we have the outside areas, what, what we'll do is we'll offer, um, we'll have, we'll have beverages outside on the patio for the members that want to stick around. So we'll do our best to accommodate them in that situation. Jimmy, you want?
I got a couple of questions.
Bring it up here. I, I don't have a question. I just want to comment that, uh, the last week you did as best you could. And, uh, it's unfortunate that we don't have people to work, but I know, uh, revenue was down, but you did the best you could and I, I was happy you did what you did.
Thanks.
Just to kind of, go ahead, Ray.
And, and in regards to that, your weekly report, and you and I have touched, touched base on this. First of all, I don't understand why you can't estimate the labor all of a sudden for the past two reports when you were estimating it before. So that one, that being said, I don't understand why there is no uh, indication of restaurant closings because of COVID or what happened because, as far as you, if you read this performance, we had no problems with the restaurant last week. The numbers are the numbers. We didn't, there's no indication we closed. There's no indication of COVID.
Right. So, I mean.
All I'm saying is we gotta do it, you gotta put more details in there. If you're gonna, if you're gonna waste, uh, if you're gonna send this out, make it accurate as possible.
Sure. So on both of those, well, first off, I spoke to everybody individually about the restaurant situation, so I didn't feel, I, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, as far as the labor situation goes.
I would assume your management, you send this to your management, right?
Yeah, I speak to those guys every day, so.
I mean, don't they want to know?
Well, they're, they were involved in the whole decision-making process of us doing what we did. Um, on the, on the other thing, as far as labor goes, so with our acquisition, I guess you will with Trune, the entire Trune operation with all of their assets, we've all, we've all migrated to a new payroll system. So in that migration, uh, all, all my reporting of labor and things like that i- is gone into a new situation, so I haven't fully got to understand how, if, if those numbers are accurate yet and I'm still making sure we gain access to some of our stuff. It's been, there's definitely been some hook, hiccups as far as that goes along and Jimmy will tell you that. It wasn't necessarily easy in that transition, but um, I will get back to where those numbers are on there and I'll make sure they're accurate before I put them on there, but I, I don't, we haven't changed anything dramatically operational wise, so I'm sure we're in the same ballpark that we have been the last.
You're gonna report the numbers, you report the numbers.
Absolutely.
I, I just make a recommendation that it's just like what we're going through, the growing pains with the new general manager is that if this isn't working for what Mr. Brooks wants, you better tell Trune what we need. I mean, you know, they, they work for us, so.
No, I mean, you know.
Get, get what he needs.
I, I, I will.
If you don't think this is important, don't bother sending it to me. But if you send it to me, I want it to be a good report. I mean, I don't necessarily have to have this.
But, and in a sense of the historical record, so we, we know today COVID was an issue. A year from now, when we're looking at, okay, why was it down last year? There's nothing there to remind it.
Yeah, and I just, I just think you need to tell them.
Right.
It's, and you could see it going on with the new general manager here and, and the stuff that we do. So just work with us.
Absolutely.
But if it don't work, tell them you need it.
I, 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 I have and, and I'll continue.
I got two other things very briefly. Membership directory updates. I got the email. You're very late on this. This should not be a surprise. When do you think, will we get them out before the people go up north?
I know Anne Marie's working on those right now. She said she has a bunch of them and I think she's trying to get it submitted.
By January twenty-eighth. She gets it by January twenty-eighth. When do we get, when are we gonna get the directory?
I will ask when they're, when they feel that it will turn around. Obviously, it usually goes to print and there's obviously time and, and as far as that goes, but I will.
Y'all gotta better, get a better handle of this. This thing should be out much earlier than it is for people to use it.
No, I, I mean, I understand, but you got, I mean, we've probably signed up forty memberships in the past five weeks, so it wouldn't have been accurate if we would have done it's.
It's not accurate now. What, you gotta take the dead people off too.
Uh, I understand. I mean, it's.
I'm just saying, disappointing. We do this every year and every year it's getting later. And later and later.
Do we get a new book, do we get a new book every year or do we just get?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do a new book every year, but, I mean.
Boy, that's an excellent. I'd like to know how much that costs.
I don't know. How much does that cost?
I'll send you that too.
And what?
It's due of the pages. They do it the ladies, please.
I got one last thing. I, I appreciate that you sent me the statistics for your month ending October thirty-one. Appreciate you sending that to me.
You're welcome.
What I'd like to see now is, is it done on the correct way, the way it's been done in the past, so that the numbers, the columns at the end are the, are the columns that we need.
So, correct. No, no, that's fine. So that, did you?
You don't have, you don't have the ability to change the columns that we want on your own.
No. So I just wanted to let you know on that report.
Yeah.
You, you found, you found the tab that, that, that was, that, that tabulates on, right?
I found the what?
You, the tab, there's like tabs on there and you saw that.
Yeah. I printed the tab.
Right. So the one that you got in October.
Yeah.
You liked the way that one looks or?
No, I wanted the way it looked last year.
Last year, okay.
Yeah. Last year, it gives you more information.
Right. So that, again, that report was generated by Omar. That was, that we then turned around and submitted back, so I'm gonna have to, cause the, at, at the one time, no, the reason why I say that is because it was, it was, it was requested.
Can you duplicate the report?
I can, but the, but the board had requested to see it in a different view, which is what you got now.
The board has requested to see, what? I'm sorry.
So the, the, the leases are now included on that report if I believe is correct, which was, which was a board direct.
Michael, I'm talking about the columns.
I got you. So I tell you what, so to make sure, to make sure we're on the same page, why don't we get together and we can sit down.
Not the same page. This co, this, I mean, this is not that.
Let's, let's.
The last column on this page says annual total forecast. The last part of it just says amended budget, year to date, prior to your actual. I just want the same columns.
He's acknowledging that you're not on the same page, so he wants to get together to make sure that.
Let's, 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 let's meet and sit down.
No, I'm not gonna get together, damn it. I want the same report. What is the big deal?
I'm, it's not a big deal. I'll forgive you whatever you want. I just gotta make sure I know exactly what you want.
Obviously, nobody else looks at the damn thing.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. General counsel report. That's right. We got, I'm sorry, period.
That's okay. Um, just a, a very quick, um, not really a report, just to let the board know. In previous years, the district has participated, um, in an event called the Heartland Ga, uh, Heartland Senior Games. The cycling portion of this. The cycling portion of this event was held at the district. This year, the YMCA and South Florida State College have joined forces basically to try and grow the event. One of the, the contact person for that reached out to me because they are interested or proposing that Sun and Lake. Kind of be the main hub for some of this, if you will, so they're looking to add um some events to the overall. Program such as a five K, a pickleball tournament. Uh, my understanding is they're going to be doing. Like a, a golf tournament, they're, they're really looking to kind of grow the program. Um, for this particular year, the two elements that they are um. Kind of proposing, I guess, to the district, if you will, to host would be the five K and a pickleball tournament. They have staff that will be. Conducting the event, so it's not necessarily at a big expense for Sun and Lake. What they're asking is to potentially host those facilities at our location. Very preliminary conversations at this point. Um, they're willing, obviously, to do like an in-kind sponsorship to make Sun and Lake a part of the promotions for this event. Very early conversations, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention so that as I learn more. I can update the, update the board via email and it's not the first time you've heard about it. So just wanted to kind of put that on your radar, to expect to hear some information from me with regards um to that event. Obviously. Should we come to any sort of, you know, conclusion with dates with them, I would bring it to the board because it would. Require us to give them permission to use the racquetball, or I'm sorry, the pickleball courts for a Saturday and Sunday. Um, it would be all eight courts, so that's typically something in the past that I bring to the board and we get your consensus on, that that's something that you will approve. As well as the five K event, um, it would be the same route that we use for our personal five Ks. However, it, it requires very brief road closures, so again, that's something that I would bring to you all, just to make sure that it was something that you approved. I don't know that cycling will still be held here, it sounds like they're looking to um increase the distance quite a bit. To something that I don't know that we can handle, and it sounds like they have another group um that kind of specializes in cycling events that, that they're going to. Have kind of take over that element, so right now, the only two in question would be the five K and the pickleball tournament. Um, it's, it's their event, so obviously, any residents could participate, any members can participate. With an entry fee to the college, it's, it's a fundraising type event for the college and the Y. So just to, again, put that on your radar so that if you see emails, if that's something that we're gonna consider pursuing, it's not the first time you've heard about it.
You have a rough idea of dates?
We all have questions.
Oh, that's fine, I figured.
Deal, we're starting with deal.
Rough idea on dates, it sounds like they haven't set the dates yet, but are we talking April or July?
They have very tentative dates, um, my understanding is they want to have all of the events concluded by the end of April. Um, I, I. Off the top of my head, I want to say that it's the end of March potentially for the pickleball tournament and sometime. In April for the um five K. Or vice versa, but end of March, April.
I, I have participated in that for the last three years, and the pickleball has always been over. At Tanglewood, Tanglewood, and they're move, they want to move it here?
Yes, they're asking to move it here, and they would actually, they have a representative um who is organizing the whole tournament, so it's not on Sun and Lake to even organize the tournament.
Yeah.
Okay, and who's this for, the Highlands?
Um, Heartland Senior Games is the name of the event. It's the YMCA and South Florida State College that have basically joined forces to try and grow the event.
Okay, and, and we get nothing for this, other than approve it to give it to them free, is that what we're doing?
Well, they would do like an in-kind sponsorship, if you will, is.
What do you mean in-kind?
So that means that typically, it would be a sponsorship that we would be required to pay for, but we wouldn't be charged anything to pay for it, it would be in exchange for using the facility. I think, in my opinion, it makes us a good community partner. Um, obviously, there's promotion that goes along with that, we would be included on um. Their major promotion materials that are distributed. Throughout the county and that.
Some lake is becoming very nice.
It is.
Yes, but, but.
Several articles in the newspaper that kind of like prominent. I mean, I was a gold medal winner for four years and I had the, I mean, there was a lot of good publicity.
Yeah, well, I, I read it in the paper, but uh, my other question is. Are they still thinking about some group? I know most of them are operating here about getting another facility, or is that dead now?
Uh, I'm sorry, can you, can you?
They're gonna build a, somebody who had a hundred thousand dollars and was trying to.
So my understanding, um, we're, we're kind of out of the loop of that now, but I believe that they are looking to. Um, now move those courts to Spring Lake Improvement District.
Good, good.
Yes, so, so not here, yeah, they, I, I believe that they've gone to a couple of different facilities and it sounds like the one that has stuck thus far is Spring Lake.
Okay, cause I know there's been two or three things that they were gonna do and it fell apart and. Okay, just so I know that.
Yeah.
That's all, okay, any more questions? Okay, who else?
Uh, quick util, quick utility update, uh, for the month of January, we've already installed eleven services, water and sewer. Um, all of those are meter idlers, we have no meters at the moment. Um, we ran out of Mueller meters in November, instead of buying an AMI meter that doesn't work with anything. We've choose, chose to save monies and estimate those reeds on the new homes, so.
And how many you got of them that you're not doing?
I think as of right now, we're probably about twenty-five in, so those are full estimates.
Is that what you're doing with new homes too?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, I am purchasing um. Commercial meters. Um, they are ultrasonic meter and they're open-ended, so they'll be able to hook to any future AMI system that we do choose, hopefully. Um, but yes, sir, I don't want to have estimates on uh commercial buildings, but I have been purchasing years for those, but they are not Mueller.
Purchasing commercial, how many are you purchasing?
So far, three, we've purchased a three inch, a two inch and a one inch, and.
How much did it cost?
Um, the three inch was like roughly nine hundred, um, I think the one inch was about three hundred and I'm not sure off the top of my head, about two inch. But they are open-ended and they will hook into a future system, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that the uh commercials should be estimated.
And Joey, this, um, commercial accounts, they pay a meter set fee to cover the cost of that meter, we aren't paying.
I'm sorry?
The, the district charges a meter set fee, so when he said the meter costs nine hundred dollars, we aren't paying the nine hundred dollars, the customer's paying for the meter.
Yes.
That would help them though.
No.
And now, the, the, the new one's going up on the frontage road, that's all. Commercial and they're paying for it.
That's what he's talking about.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought it was, but I wanted to just make sure, and I knew they had to pay for it, so. Anybody else?
I guess it's my turn now. Okay, so I'm going to, based on today's discussion, I'm gonna prepare a legal opinion about the transferring of funds between accounts. And I'm gonna try and have that ready by uh February eleventh to go into the board packet for the February eighteenth meeting. So I'm gonna do my best to get that done. Um. I finally received a, the, all the documentation from Scott Lacony's office, there's a mountain of digitized information that's on a thumb drive that I still have to go through. But I am in the process of going through that. Uh, executed all the demand letters for the uh bondholder that the, the phase five bondholder that's wanting to. Initiate a bunch of foreclosures, so all those should be going out either later today or Monday at the latest. Uh, hundred and sixty-eight, I think, demand letters, uh, so hopefully we'll. In the best case scenario, we'll be getting a lot of those properties will just be turned back over to the, to the district. And we won't have to, we won't have to do a foreclosure, but if we do have to do foreclosures, I've got a meeting with uh Cliff Rhodes's office on Wednesday. And I'm gonna discuss the, you know, possibility of uh having his uh staff paralegals help with those foreclosures if that's what it comes to. Uh, unless there's any question, that's all I've got.
What about that one house on uh? Our favorite house with the.
Our fifty-eight oh one Granada?
Yeah.
There's been, haven't had any updated information, but I, uh, that's a, a good point because I thought about that on the way here. If we are in a position that we can. Put, we can cite them for code violations. So if you want me to get with Mr. Bronfeld, I know that there was, there was, when I talked to the, the building official, they had talked about that property potentially being sold. I don't know if it's been sold, I'm not aware of it. Um, so I guess the question becomes is, do we want to uh go ahead and cite them and get that process started? With the potential that that could kill a. A future sale, or do we want to try and some negotiation and say, hey? You guys have thirty days to get this property sold and get it back, or, or, or get the permit reactivated and get back to improving it, otherwise, we're gonna start assessing you. So if you guys want to give me some direction on that, I'm happy to.
I think we gotta do something, we gotta start the ball rolling.
I think you need to do that and give them thirty days and tell them what we're gonna do.
I'll try to negotiate something and then if.
I mean, it's been up there, what, two, three, four years?
Oh yeah, it's been four, going on five years now since this had an active permit, so, all right, I'll get that process started.
General managers report?
Sure, and consequently, they did get started with the paving project, laying things out, you'll see some activity going on on Balboa. Um, and also, according to our work plan, Cortez and that action, we have those all listed out. We did run into an issue on Balboa, about a thirty-inch pipes rusted out, in danger of collapse. Got a estimate to fix it, ninety-six hundred dollars, just another example of deteriorating infrastructure. Uh, planning to move forward and get excavation points to replace that culvert while they're out there working. Uh, our concern is they'll go out and pave a road and then down the. Down the work plan, if we decide, oh, we need to replace that culvert now, we're tearing up a road that we just paved six months ago. So um, I'm gonna move forward and uh. Through the budget on maintenance of stormwater, spend the ninety-six hundred dollars and let excavation point do it, so there isn't any finger pointing on. Who compacted the soil, who did paving, whether the culvert replacement caused the pavement to collapse with another contractor. Had some activity in the buil, building realm this week, man and I sat down with three representatives from Prominence Homes. Who bought the three hundred and six lots, Amanda provided them with a spreadsheet of all their lots and showing which ones had roads and which ones had water and sewer. Uh, we sat, talked about the permitting process, talked about involvement with the HOAs.
Good.
Um, and he said it's, it's taken a while to get started, they were actually gonna come in previously, but COVID kind of slowed things down. And uh, they're moving into the Highlands County market, it's not just Sun and Lake, they plan to move right into Sebring and Lake Placid at the same time. So he uh said that once they get started, though, there'll be a flurry of activity.
Good.
Do we still talk to them start, start date?
No, but I'm sure with their advanced team right now, they're laying things out and uh within the next few months, you'll see some applications for permits. Um, they do specialize in single-family homes, they also build those for investors, which could be rental property, so two sides to it. But uh, very nice people. And also had a fellow come in from Century Homes, and he said they were the sixth largest home builder in the United States. And they want to move into Sun and Lake and Highlands County, and we sat down and went through the permitting and he said his uh. Company has given him the green light to start buying properties to build homes on. So same thing, went over all the bond issues, back assessments and spent some time with him, but they're very interested and they're, they're moving forward. He said he was given the green light by corporate.
Good.
Do we have somebody on point with this to get back in touch with this, a gentleman from Century?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to him, I sent the permitting manual and all the background information. And uh, one issue that comes up is, you know, you have HOAs. And I represented both these people that the HOAs aren't um. Visible and real active, but Southern Homes took the approach that they're gonna follow all the HOA covenants and restrictions. So they don't run into a problem down the road if these HOAs start getting active.
Yeah, I would just interrupt you, I'm impressed with Southern Homes. When they, when they bought lots, Beverly, uh. Some of them were HOAs, particularly on uh. Double Beach.
Right.
They made them build a house, cause I, I know somebody wanted to buy a lot there and they wanted to put a. It was Michael Hansen, or Hanson, where he lives, beside him, they wanted a home just like Hanson's. But Michael Hanson built a smaller home that the HOA uh wouldn't, wouldn't uh. Okay, so they, Southern Homes made them build. Uh, a home there, they didn't, they ended up not buying that. And now Southern Homes build a home to the, for somebody else, the specs that. So as long as our builders are doing. They get to read, I asked David about this, and, and they know when they buy a property or doing a property that they're in the HOA or not the HOA. And it's up to them to do what's best, and Southern Homes has done uh. A good job there, making sure that, that they don't. They don't do what just the customer wants, they make them buy what. What, what, what the HOA says, whether it's active or not, and. In that area, the HOA is not active. But they, they still made them build that home, so just, okay, sorry, I just wanted Beverly to know that, so.
Do we, do we know if Horneck's done anything with unit twelve?
Sure.
Has Horneck done anything with unit twelve yet?
Yes, so we just signed a replating um application, and he's gonna go to the county, which basically they're vacating all those roadway easements. So he can replat the whole property into larger lots. And uh, he brought that application in with a small check this week, so they're moving forward on that unit twelve.
Good, very good.
Yep, he's doing good, had a oddball request from a homeowner, he wanted us to take down four trees on our property because the limbs are going over onto his and the roots. And uh, all the pine needles dropping is yorkeys and they carry them in the house, et cetera, et cetera. And I said, well, Florida law, if our limbs or our roots come over on your property, feel free to cut it, but uh, I don't think the district is gonna pay to have these trees removed. Um, and we don't have like a budget for tree removal, and I was a little concerned because if I remove the trees on his, behind his property, how many people are gonna be calling me up and saying?
Speaking of tree removal, did the, eh, on uh. Come on, deer run. Number five, number six. We took down a ton of trees. Behind, to the right of the green. That were nobody's way, did somebody pay to have that done, or do we do that on our own? I'm sorry?
I think that was during Earl, Earl's time.
It just happened the last couple of weeks. They were out there doing, they were out there taking trees down, I, is that, you guys, anybody know about it?
Six?
Ah, deer run, yeah, six, yeah, where they're building, those two, where they're building those homes.
To the right of the T, I cleaned those up.
You cleaned all the trees up, took down a bunch of trees?
I didn't cut down any trees, I took down all the weed, the uh invasive trees and everything. And then like behind number seven green, I cleaned that up as well, it was what we talked about when we rode. But it's, they're just basically hammocks, a lot of that stuff that was in there, like to the right of number sixteen was nothing but invasive weeds, I mean, they're.
Okay, I was just one, I mean, I just want to take them down, I thought it was trees, perhaps it was just tall shrubbery.
It was.
Don't even, I'm gonna take a couple, I'm probably gonna take your tree down on number four. Um, if the woodpeckers will leave it alone, and then I'm gonna take down the pine tree on number uh eighteen, between nine and eighteen, that dead pine tree there on turf. So that's the only, I have not dropped a tree down.
Oh, I, I, I probably misspoke, it was just tall shrubbery, right?
Just cleaning up the hammocks.
It was ten or fifteen feet tall brush.
Yes.
Yes, we did clean, we're, we're starting to clean those up.
That's why, I just asked, I was curious.
And we're doing that, not paying anyone. It's in-house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I thought, well, remember, because we went through that.
Yeah.
Cause it, it gives them the ability to see the golf course, that's just coincidentally.
And uh, I also left in a packet too, there was a request. Because they weren't being included for the security report and the code enforcement report. And uh, those are in the packet um from, from December. And Bob and Bob are gonna start moving forward with uh at the end of the month, providing those for the first agenda of the month. And I also asked both of them to come to the next meeting just to explain their reports. Um, and any issues they might be having with it. Um, I looked at the security report, December, um, there were sixty-two items on it. So about fifteen entries a week for a hundred and eight hours.
I, I'd like for the, when you do your presentation in two weeks, I would like to know. What committees or what groups you're gonna post on the website on a monthly basis? what committees or what groups you're gonna post on the website on a monthly basis. Like, security or what have you, you used to remember, I showed you that thing last meeting, about things that were posted on a monthly basis. I'd just like to know what your plans are, if you're gonna post anything, and if you're not, then I think you should take it down from the website. Because I think there's nothing worse than somebody wanting to look something up and seeing that the last posting from us was six, seven months ago. It just, it just makes us look. So if you want to take them down, take them down, but if you're gonna post them, post them.
So got those reports, unless you have any questions, we also had our loss prevention consultant from our insurance firm come out this past week and went around and inspected all the facilities and there'll be a written report on any of our exposure liabilities from an insurance standpoint.
I have a question and probably Dave could tell us too, but we have a neighbor that, of course, all the neighbors come to me because I'm a supervisor, but there is a, I think it's a young kid, a family that runs, that starts about 5:00 in the evening with noise. And I personally probably have called security 100 times in the last two years. It's still going on, they're renters. I asked security and I didn't get mad at them, but I just asked them, I said, do you actually talk to them and say? Because they do, when I call, they go over there and it's not. One of the security guys, the last I talked to, said, maybe we should have Bob go to the landowner and say, you know, say something to the people renting it, is that possible? That they can say something to them, because?
Well, yeah, obviously the landlord can, but the problem is, is the district doesn't have a noise ordinance, the county noise ordinance. So the only, the only way to get them cited for noise is to complain to the county and get some, a county person to come out. Then you have to take decibel readings and, I mean, I don't know what the situation is.
I personally don't want to hurt them or financially, I just don't want, I mean, how can you get through to people, quit it. I mean, it's been two, three years, maybe four, that I'm sitting watching TV in my, in my house and I can hear the thump, thump, thump. And.
Kind of call the county?
That, I did that once, two, three years ago, the county come out and says, we can't do anything.
I'll say, a lot of it depends on measurements, because like I say, the noise measurements, yeah, they have to, there's a, there's certain, they have to take a, I think, a measurement from the, from the property line or a certain distance from the property line, I'm not up on the noise ordinances, but yeah, it's very technical.
Our only alternative then is to call security every night and ask them to go over, and they do shut it off. But there's just no way to get this kid or these people to stop it, is there? We just.
No, I mean, there really is.
I just gotta call security every night. Okay.
I got, I got one last thing to ask you, there was a report you gave us, I don't know, a while back on a study that was conducted on water meters or, I can't remember what the study was even for, on rates.
Right.
And we haven't heard, I haven't heard back from you on anything, what the plans are to do with that report that we paid for, to have a conversation on it or?
Yes, sir, the, it actually did not have anything to do with rates, it had to do with the connection fees that we charge per capacity.
Well, we haven't had any conversation on that either.
No, we'll be bringing it forward and I'm gonna have it getting a proposal, I requested from a consultant to do a rate study in conjunction with it.
We paid money for this study, we haven't even looked at it yet, have we?
No, but if you're gonna raise the connection fees, which needs to be done, I think if you look in and.
You have to have.
They recommended even basically that we go up to $2,470 on the water side, right now, we charge 1,100.
Are we gonna review this report that you got?
Yeah, we're gonna do, I'm actually having a third party also review it because there's limitations on how high you can raise impact fees by recent legislation, no more than 50%, and it has to be spread over two years, we're looking at 100% increase. But some people have been saying, if you have dire straits or crumbling infrastructure, that they're giving you exceptions or you call it a capacity fee, not an impact fee.
So is this report that I'm sitting on any good, or should I just throw it in the trash?
We'll be bringing it to you for final review and approval and scheduling a public hearing because you have to have a public hearing to initiate the actual connection fee.
And we're gonna go over this when?
Next meeting or the meeting after, it's all gonna be in the next 30 days.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah, and raising the connection fee is really impacting all the new construction, not the existing users here, and.
I'm just saying, we got the report, I just wanted to know what we're gonna do with it.
Might that be part of the strategic plan study?
Oh, we can, we can bring that up, and part of that strategic plan is when, the strategic plan says, fund it, finance it, get it on good ground, but it doesn't have any objectives how we're gonna do it. So we're moving forward with the connection fee study, the rate increase on that side, the SRF side, and now with the approval of the facilities plan, we're moving in the same direction to provide a funding source for stormwater improvements.
Okay, anybody else? Unfinished business? New business? Committee reports? Discussion to and from the board?
Yep.
I will be here at the next meeting on the 4th, and I will be missing a few meetings. And based on the complete resistance to having remote attendance, I don't see, I've had some things come up in my world that's gonna have me away again this year. So I'm going to give the board my resignation so that you can replace me on the board because without remote meetings, I won't be here too often.
Sorry to hear that, but.
I will, I have no plans on leaving Sun and Lake, I will continue to be one of those active gadflies in the audience, watching over things and listening remotely, but if you need people that can be at the meeting, then you need to find somebody who can be here, thank you.
Neil, are you planning on being, are you resigning now or?
I will be at the next meeting.
You will be after the next meeting?
You can start scheduling appointments, because it's gonna take a while for you to fill the position right now.
Okay. Sorry to hear that, but you will be here at the next meeting, but that's after that, okay?
Do we as a board have a policy against remote?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a policy that.
We have to be here to vote.
You have to be here to vote.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's it, we're adjourned.
No pizza?